And welcome to the April 16th, 2024 Business Meeting of your Ashland City Council. We will start this evening with the land acknowledgement, which will be offered by Councilwoman Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. We acknowledge and honor the Aboriginal people in whose ancestral homelands we work, the Kira Kutsam Band of the Shasta Nation, as well as the diverse and vibrant Native Communities who make their home here today. We honor the first stewards in the Rokee Valley and the lands we love and depend on. Tribes with ancestral lands in and surrounding the geography of the Ashland watershed include the original past, present, and future Indigenous inhabitants of the Shasta, Takelma, and Athabaskan People. We also recognize and acknowledge the Shasta Village of Kwakwaka, where the crow lights that is now the Ashland City Plaza.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Dale will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hyatt?
Here.
Bloom?
Here.
Dale?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Kaplan?
Here.
Duquesne?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
Thank you. In terms of Mayor’s announcements, I only have one, and that is to make sure that everyone who is here who would like to speak to the council understands the process for doing so. If you would like to come forward this evening, please make sure that you sign up. The sheets are up along that back sidewalk, and you’ll make sure that you give them to Alyssa. Make sure when you write in your information that you let us know whether you’re coming to speak for public forum, which is when you would come address the council on any issues that are not on the agenda, or if you would like to speak to a specific agenda item, and that will help us bring you up at the right time to address the council. We now move on to the approval of minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Okay, the floor is open for a motion to approve.
I’ll do it. I move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you, and City Manager’s report.
All right, good evening. Just a couple of updates. I wanted to let you all know that the lighting that was requested on Ashland Street near the overpass is going in and should be completed within the next week. Thank you to our staff and ODOT who worked together to make that happen. We’re also working on completing the fencing in that area near the overpass, as well as under the overpass, where there’s some holes and gaps that have been along the railroad tracks, so that should be done shortly. Our logging project has begun, so you will hear chainsaws, and there will be more traffic on the roads with logging trucks and dump trucks and potentially trees attached to helicopters flying through the air, so that is all going on. Our utility billing phone lines are now open during business hours Monday through Friday, so you should be able to get through more easily now, so that is an expanded option there. And just as a reminder, our April newsletter is out with our utility bills, as well as up on our website. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are now at the public forum time of our evening. We have seven speakers, and now that we’re starting public forum, we are closed for any additional request to speak at public forum. Each person will have two minutes, and Alyssa will help us keep time. When you have 20 seconds left, she will give you a single chime, and when your time is up, she’ll give you a double chime. And at that point, please finish the sentence that you’re on, so that the next person in line can have their turn to speak to the council. We start with Sitka Moss and Amanda Morehouse, followed by Kira Peties and Piper Banks. Please come to these two microphones. Those are live as well, right? Sabrina, those microphones are live? Please come to these microphones, get in nice and close to them so we can hear you, and please tell us your name and the city in which you live before starting your testimony. Thank you.
My name is Sitka, and I’m from Trail. Tonight, I wanted to read words from Bisan. She is a journalist from northern Gaza, and she wrote this the day before the end of Ramadan. “They say that tomorrow is Eid. Summer is gone, winter has arrived, then New Year, then summer again. Ramadan and Eid, and I stumble every day in a world designed from my nightmares. There are a thousand soldiers and a thousand shells between me and my home, between my family and friends are countries, all of them scattered around the world. Whenever the army withdrew from a place, I ran to find anything that I knew from my real world, far from the world of nightmares. Before the genocide, I had walked in the Gaza Strip inch by inch, memorizing it by heart. I told its stories, as I am a storyteller. But every time I arrived after the accursed army, I find that it has been stripped of the color, life, spirit, and memories from everything. They have turned the buildings into sand, and the sand into powder and dust. They have crushed everything, the trees, the people, and the stones. Is there anything in the world more cruel to a storyteller than destroying her stories and her memories? Am I fed up? No. We have a verse in Arabic that says, quote, ‘My family, my country, if it oppressed me, is dear to me; and my family, even if they grieve against me, are honorable.’ ‘I am Palestinian,’ she says, ‘and I carry with me a lot of grief, sadness, and anger; but I carry stubbornness mixed with the soil of the village from which I originate in northern Gaza. And my stubbornness tells me Gaza is the most beautiful place on earth. We will rebuild, even if it takes 100 years. That is why we were created. Inshallah, every year, will my land be mine, will my sea be mine, and my sky be mine?’ Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Morehouse. I live in Central Point and spend money in Ashland. According to the organization Veterans for Peace, the following are laws violated every time weapons shipments to Israel are authorized. The Foreign Assistance Act forbids the provision of assistance to a government which engages in a consistent pattern of gross violations of internationally recognized human rights. Arms Export Control Act: Countries that receive U.S. military aid can only use weapons for legitimate self-defense and internal security. Israel’s genocidal campaign in Gaza goes way beyond self-defense and internal security. The U.S. War Crimes Act forbids grave breaches of the Geneva Conventions, including willful killing, torture, or inhuman treatment, willfully causing great suffering or serious injury to body or health, and unlawful deportation or transfer perpetrated by the Israeli occupying forces. The Leahy Law prohibits the U.S. government from using funds for assistance to the units of foreign security forces where there is credible information implicating that a unit is in the commission of gross violations of human rights. In addition, every year, the U.S. writes Israel a blank check for $3.8 billion, which we all just had our tax day yesterday. Every one of us, some of that money is going to be going to Israel to continue their violence against Palestine and Gaza. Amid Israel’s ongoing genocide against Palestinians, lawmakers are currently considering $4.1 billion in addition military funding to Israel. With that $14.1 billion, Congress is considering spending. Forty million households could be powered by solar electricity for a year. Instead, 281,000 tons of carbon dioxide were emitted by the Israeli military in the first 60 days of its assault on Gaza.
Thank you. Kira Peties and Piper Banks, followed by Sam Inata and Brent Thompson.
Hello, Mayor Graham and the members of City Council. My name is Kira, and I’m a resident of Ashland, but you already all know that. I’ve talked to you all many times about the same thing that I’ve come here to talk about. Over one year ago, I marched out of class with 400 Ashland High School students to demand climate justice in our community. I’ve also dedicated this past year to organizing for the City Council to pass the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package that would improve air quality and community health, increase energy affordability, and contribute to Ashland’s Climate and Energy Action Plan goals. And now I’m here once again to tell you that it’s been seven years since the SEEP was passed, and about three months ago, CPAC passed the policy package with a positive recommendation, but nothing has happened. This makes me really disappointed, as someone else could be up here voicing their concerns, and I could be at home doing homework. So here I am today urging you to accelerate the process and get this package passed as soon as possible. You’re the ones in power here, and you can make this happen, not only for the people of Ashland, but so we can be a model to all the cities that are watching us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Graham and City Council members. My name is Piper Banks. I’m an Ashland resident and a youth organizer with Rokee Climate. It is far from my first time sitting in front of you regarding the Climate and Clean Air Policy Package, but again, I sit here not doing my homework, but urging you to take action now. The climate crisis is not going away, and neither am I. Both as an individual and a member of RCAT, we are not going to forget about this policy. It will not be swept under the rug. The work has been done, and it is now both your job and your responsibility to move this policy forward with great urgency. Today, we have for you a letter of support from over 30 local and statewide organizations. This shows the breadth of support for Ashland to move forward. I urge you to join over 100 cities, counties, and states across the country that have begun the process to transition from the use of fossil fuels to a more renewable and equitable future. The time for action is now, not in a vague undefined moment in the future, now. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Inata and Brent Thompson, followed by Paul Mozina.
Hello, my name is Sam Inata. I was born and raised in Ashland. We come here yet again to ask for the City Council to come together to put forth a resolution for a ceasefire on the agenda, and for all councilors to unanimously pass this resolution to collaborate with us on a document that will be sent to our elected officials of the state and federal government, urging them to recognize this grave atrocity and pressure them to vocally stand up against this genocide. Resolution affirming Ashland’s commitment and support for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in all of Gaza. Whereas, the City of Ashland believes that all life is precious and that we stand united against violence, the City of Ashland advocates for the safety, dignity, freedom, and equality of all people, regardless of religion, race, or nationality, and 74% of American voters support a permanent ceasefire, along with the release of hostages. According to a February 22nd, 2024 Data for Progress survey, and want to see the U.S. leverage its diplomatic relationships to prevent further violence and civilian deaths. And whereas, over 33,000 innocent lives have perished due to this conflict, who have been killed in a matter of weeks, of whom over 14,000 are children, with thousands more missing presumed buried under the rubble. Gaza is in a dihumanitarian crisis that is getting worse with each passing day, with the only remaining hospitals running out of fuel and medical supplies, and over 2 million Palestinians are facing displacement, homelessness, and starvation. And international organizations like Amnesty International, the United Nations, the World Health Organization, and the U.S. Agency for International Development, the International Rescue Committee, and many others have made a call for a permanent ceasefire in order to prevent the further loss of life of civilians and to be in accordance with international humanitarian law. And whereas, the City of Ashland recognizes that the current crisis takes place within a long history and affirms that for a pathway to lasting peace and justice to be developed, the root causes of this crisis need to be addressed.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. I’m Brent Thompson. I live in Ashland. I think the last time I testified, I was here nagging you about Siskiyou Boulevard, about a plaque regarding the origins of it, so I just thought I’d mention that. Are we making any progress in acknowledging the carters that donated the land for Siskiyou So you can answer that or not?
Mr. Thompson, our council rules don’t allow us to engage directly with the person who’s speaking.
I forgot. It’s been a while.
It’s okay.
And the other thing, you’re dealing with annexing or whether to annex or not. And in 1985, we had a planning action at the top of Walker around Peachy Lane. And at the time we had this planning action, the issue came up, where’s our land inventory saying we need this land? And so this evolved into a lengthy 10-year dialogue about whether we infill or sprawl. And finally, when we did regional problem solving in the OOs, basically, the city said, we’re going to work with the land we have and not annex land until 2040 or 50. And so I wanted to remind the council that we had that policy, and we had a lot of dialogue about how to accommodate growth. So the Planning Department and the Planning Commission, which ultimately was ratified by the council, did a whole bunch of measures to attempt to make it so we could use land more efficiently. And so I’m urging the council to look at those things and follow up on those things so that we don’t grab land. I can see no reason to grab land for multifamily dwellings when we have accessory dwellings permitted everywhere, and that was a great move by the state. Now, we don’t have to add that land in our land inventory, all the potential secondary units, but we’re also not prohibited from including it, according to Greg Holmes, 1,000 Friends. So when the council’s looking at multifamily, let’s subsidize ADUs. I’m a landlord, and people ask me, is this part of a big complex? And every time I say no, they go, oh, good. And the people who move here are sensitive to this. They want uniqueness. They don’t want big complexes, which is why I was against that project above the car dealerships, because all I saw there was Real Estate Investment Trust buying it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Mozina?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but please stay in nice and close to that.
Okay, I will. Thank you, councilors. My name is Paul Mozina. I live on Rokee Street, just up the block from where they’re putting the new wireless communication facility in at the Science Building, the fifth Verizon Tower, or wireless communication facility going up in the city. And I just wanted, I mean, I want to thank you for your service, and I sincerely mean this. I know that it takes a tremendous amount of time. I can’t even barely get enough time to organize myself to come to the meeting and speak. I mean, it could be, you know, so I just want you to know that I sincerely appreciate the amount of personal time that you all give up to do what you do for us. But I disagree with you on the way that the Chapter 16 Telecommunication Ordinance was processed. I just wanted to share that, why I’m disappointed about it. And recall, at the meeting on March 19th, Councilwoman Dale said, “We have been nothing but forthright throughout this entire process. I have made every attempt to communicate in good faith.” And it sounds good, but back on November 22nd, you all hired the attorney Ms. Werner, and we met with Jeff on this. I was at a meeting with Jeff on the 7th of December. He didn’t mention that. He didn’t mention that this effort to write the ordinance, independent of any community input, was well underway, and that ordinance must have been finished by late January, early February, because the staff reviewed it, and it was submitted for public comment on the 13th. And that ordinance was not touched, it wasn’t changed, up to the first reading. None of the comments from anyone were incorporated into that ordinance. Campanelli’s document was not received by Councilwoman Dale until March 4th. Nothing, Campanelli’s document, was integrated into that ordinance. There were no public comments integrated whatsoever, and it just, it didn’t feel like it was a real honest engagement. So for the councilor to say that I made every attempt to communicate in good faith, I just, it just, it doesn’t resonate as true for me, because we were there, OST, the Oregon for Safer Technology was there, a sincere effort to communicate with y’all, and the councilor couldn’t tell us that, independent of us, he had already crafted the ordinance, submitted for public comment, there was going to be no engagement from the community at all, and that’s what happened. And I’m really disappointed about that. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. We are now to the consent agenda. Would any councilor like to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? Councilwoman Kaplan?
Push the button. Automatic now. I would like to remove the first item, please.
Any other removals? Okay, the floor is open for a motion regarding you remaining four items on the consent agenda. Councilwoman Hyatt?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented, understanding the first item is pulled.
Second. Roll call, please, Alyssa. Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kaplan, agenda item number one.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This item has, item number one has two parts to it. One is the 3.8% increase in rates for our franchisee Recology, starting, I guess, May 1st, and I’m happy for that to go forward. I’d like to split, though, the consideration of the franchise agreement. It’s an extension of the franchise agreement for seven years. I’d like to delay that until the next meeting to have time to consider that more fully. So, because the resolution is written with both items, I’d seek guidance from our city attorney on how to split that out.
You would have the action and motion for your, in your council communication, and it would just be a matter of splitting that off. There is nothing in the contract itself that says that it can’t be done. I know that we’re behind time as it is right now. My understanding is that the ownership has changed, and so it was assigned to a new ownership. And so normally, what we get is we get a response from Recology first, and that kind of sparks us to do something, but in this case, it didn’t happen. So we did eventually start getting that information. Now, and I’m not aware of anything in the contract that says that we have to do this by April, well, other than the contract says from last time that it was started at April 1st, so that’s the reason why I use that date for April 1st, starting again, the contract. It would just be another delay. I would think, however, that once we resolve this issue, the fees that are being charged would go back, you know, would be retroactive. That is, it would start at the date that we’re agreeing to, as far as April 1st. That’s all right. I mean, if that’s not a problem. So, I mean, I don’t think they’re going to want to delay the pricing because we have a problem at this point, or want to renegotiate the contract, or whatever we need to do on it, sure what your...
So it sounds like you’re suggesting that we just delay the whole thing, rather than just go, because I was suggesting going forward with the rate increase, which I understood that was more time-sensitive, but if it’s not time-sensitive, I’m happy to delay the whole thing and consider it at the next meeting. Again, seeking your guidance on how to...
No, I understand. Thank you.
So the rate increase started April 1st, so that’s already started, as that is a courtesy to come to council. I think what you’re talking about is the franchise agreement itself, and since we did not provide notice as of December 1st for any sort of termination, it sounds like we just want to revisit the franchise agreement and review it? Is that correct?
That’s correct.
Okay, so I think we could probably just pull this item...
Done.
...until the next meeting.
So then I need to move to delay it to the next meeting, date certain? Is that...
Yeah, postpone to the next...
Postpone to date certain?
Yeah, I would postpone to a date certain.
Okay, I’d like to, I don’t know if you need discussion first, or I put a motion on?
No, you can put a motion on it.
So I’d like to move to postpone discussion of this item until the next, the first meeting in May.
Is there a second?
I’ll second that.
Okay. Councilwoman Kaplan?
Yeah, I am, in looking at the franchise agreement, I had asked for the annual report from the franchisee, and we got that yesterday. It was a little bit delayed, and I just, there’s a lot in there, and I’d just like an opportunity to look at it a little bit more deeply at that. And there’s a couple of items in the terms of the franchise agreement that I’d just like to have a chance to consider more deeply as well.
Councilwoman Dale?
I appreciate that and agree with that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
I would just add that, looking at the term, it, I think punctuation matters, so I would want clarity for the conversation. It says, “with subsequent seven-year terms renewing annually.” So I read that as seven iterations of one-year renewals, but I get why Bob would read it as a seven-year renewal. So I’d want to be clear on that.
It’s your interpretation. That is, is that as of last year, it began with now annual renewals for the next seven years, and then after that period of time, we would have to redo the entire contract.
Okay.
But there’s still, I mean, business partners want, as general rule, as my experience has been, that if there’s some reasonable, you know, reasonable reasons for adjustments to the contract, then I don’t see that as a problem.
Yeah.
And then I would just have one other follow-up. We’re not in breach of contract if we don’t consent to the rate changes this evening, are we?
No, I don’t see that as being a breach. It’s just that, it’s just a delay in the actual execution of the contract, but the contract is still pretty much on. I mean, it’s just a matter of people having an arrangement and talking about whatever you need to talk about. I’m not sure what the issues are, but, I mean, as long as it’s not of, I refuse, you know, that we’re going to reject the contract at this point, then that’s a whole nother conversation, but I don’t hear that from what’s being discussed, so...
Okay, thank you.
That’s not my intention exactly.
No, I didn’t think it, I didn’t think it was, yeah.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to have a bit more time, since we just got the annual report yesterday, and we know that those sorts of things happen, but if there is no timeline, I would appreciate some additional time with it as well. Are there any further comments or questions?
Okay, roll call, please, Alyssa. Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now to public hearings and ordinances, the CDBG awards and action plan development.
Brandon Goldman, Community Development Director.
And Linda Reed, Housing Program Manager.
So this is the annual allocation of Community Development Block Grants, which is a HUD program. The city, being an entitlement community, receives funds each year to apply to eligible uses. As part of our process, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee reviews applications that are received and makes recommendations to council. And with that, I’ll let Linda present.
So this year, the city is expecting a total of around $179,575. This is actually based on our prior year’s allocation. The city will not receive final notification until after these awards are made. However, the city reserves the right to award more or less than the estimate, depending on the final allocation. This year, the city received two applications for funding, one application for capital project, which can expend all of the funding minus the administrative costs, and one application for public services funding. The application for public services funding is from Maslow Project, which many of you are familiar with. Maslow was requesting $18,000 to continue the program that they offer in the Ashland School District. A new entity called Sunstone Housing Collaborative has requested $143,660 to assist them in land acquisition, buying down the cost of land acquisition, essentially. The Housing and Human Services Committee met on March 28th to evaluate the awards. They heard presentations from the applicants and made an award recommendation of $20,000 to Maslow Project, with the remaining balance of funds, which is approximately $123,660, in a provisional award to Sunstone Housing Collaborative for their capital project. So staff reviews the applications each year and makes recommendations based on eligibility and several other factors, which are in your council communication. And staff is recommending essentially $18,000 for Maslow Project, though they could be awarded more. though they could be awarded more if you so desired. Only because, staff only recommended that amount because that's what they requested. And staff also recommended a provisional award to Sunstone Housing Collaborative. The provisional award addresses a few of the issues that the city found with the Sunstone Housing Collaborative application. One is that it may or may not be eligible, depending on who responds to the request for proposals for the affordable housing development. And the timeline for the affordable housing, RFP, and selection process sets the project out into the future. So essentially, a provisional allocation will allow the city to essentially reserve the funding for Sunstone, but not commit the funding until that project is really ready to proceed, and the city is clear on what that project benefit will be, who will be answering the RFP, and what their timeline for proceeding would be. The Sunstone Housing Collaborative is a nonprofit entity, so it is eligible. Land acquisition at market rate is an eligible activity. But this organization is very new, has not utilized this funding before, and hasn't done a project of this sort before. So awarding a provisional allocation, the staff felt, allows them to move forward with some measure of confidence, but allows the city to maintain control over those funds until time when we could execute a contract based on scope of work that we can assure will meet the program requirements. And this will also allow the city, if that project doesn't move forward in a timely manner, or doesn't move forward in a way that would be eligible, the city could then retain those funds and offer them again in the next program year. And if Sunstone is still wanting to do something at that time, they could reapply. So I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification if that was at all confusing.
Questions for staff? Council Kaplan?
Yes, I have a question. Thanks. Thanks, Linda. Thanks for that explanation. I guess I'd just like clarity on, or as much clarity as you can provide, on what is, it's provisional until, should Sunstone Housing Collaborative find a designated eligible use for the CDBG funding? So what does that mean? Does it mean sign a contract with somebody? Does it mean start, break ground? Does it mean start spending money? What is the actual trigger?
It means all of those things, kind of. So what we really need is for Sunstone to go through their RFP process and select a developer. Really, the funding will be used to buy down the cost of the acquisition for the affordable housing developer. So once they go through that RFP process and identify a developer, then sign a contract with that developer, then the land will transfer essentially from the school district to the developer. And at that time, then we could come in and provide our funding to help buy down that cost for the affordable housing developer. What we don't know at this point is who the developer will be, whether that developer is going to be providing a product that is eligible at that 80% of area median income level, which is the top end of what CDBG will allow, and what that development timeline will look like for readiness to proceed and breaking ground in those pieces. Does that answer?
So I think what I heard is that their contract has to be awarded and the land transferred by February 1st, 2025?
Yeah, I think at that point is when we would want to reallocate the funds, because we would be in the middle of this process with new applicants.
Thank you. And thanks to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee for great work on this.
Council Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, thank you for the presentation. And also grateful to the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee for their work on this. It's an exciting project, and I just want to make sure, as we move forward with our partners, Sunstone, Ashland School District, City of Ashland, use of federal HUD funds, we are 110% on solid footing with regard to separation of organizations, reporting structures. We are good.
So we aren't doing a contract with them now.
Okay.
And at the time of contract, we can then ensure that it, the project will meet the CDBG guidelines.
Okay.
And that the process and what is included in the contract will meet the requirements.
Okay, and that's the, I think that also goes to the provisional point that you're making.
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the clarity.
Council Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, quick question. So this, this presentation, Council Kaplan and I recused ourselves, I guess, is a way to put it. We weren't sure on what the rules were there. And until we get a new website, it's very difficult to pull up minutes. So I was hoping you could explain the $2,000 difference between staff's recommendation and the committee's recommendation.
Yeah, so in February, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Commission met and reviewed the social service grant applications. And at that time, as usual, we had more requests for funding than we had funding. And, you know, all of the applicants, which we'll talk about later, are great projects, great organizations, doing needed work in our community. And it's always hard to give them less than they could utilize to do that work. Maslow Project has been serving the Ashland community through the Ashland School District with incredible outcomes and just really beneficial work. And I don't know why they didn't request more money. Normally, they do. And so public service money, which is 15% of the full allocation, is the maximum amount the city can spend for public service activities. It's actually around $26,000. So they could have asked for that much money. They didn't. And I think the Housing and Human Services Commission was reacting to a desire to fund that program more fully.
Thank you.
Council Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate all the work in the packet here. There's a lot of information. The Maslow Project is critical in our community. And I'm really excited about the Sunstone Project and really have seen it pop up several times in the packet here. So the ball is rolling, and we're all excited about it. So thank you for your efforts there. My only question really is that, is the provisional status going to hold up the CDBG funds coming to us? And I know this is my first rodeo, so help me out here.
So it will not. We don't have any other applicants at this time. We have made it a provisional award in the past, and that is sort of in recognition that a grantee who may be new or who may have a project that is sort of unproven in that, you know, that organization maybe hasn't done that activity before. So if, if something happens, if it fails to move forward, if they change and end up moving in a different direction, the city can reallocate that money at any time. We wouldn't have to wait until the next RFP process. The city can reallocate that money through an additional RFP process, or even through our own process, where we utilize that funding for something that we need. So right now, no one is going to be missing out on funds. So we're not recommending a provisional award and then not awarding someone else.
Okay.
One thing I'd say to elaborate is the Community Development Block Grant Program through HUD requires that we not accrue quite a bit of carryover, that we stay at less than 1.5x our annual allocation. So part of a provisional award is to ensure that we don't go up against that limit set by HUD. If it turns out that the funds need to be re-awarded in February of 2025 and awarded through a similar process like tonight, we would still have time to meet that timeliness standard through the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So theoretically, Sunstone will be awarded provisionally, and they'll be able to bank on that for future grants, saying, you know, we have this money earmarked.
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Appreciate you both.
Council Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Linda. I'm so excited to hear this. And I applaud you and the Housing and Human Services Committee. I look forward to Sunstone being realized. It's a wonderful opportunity. And Mayor, I wanted you to know that I am no longer on the board of the Maslow Project, so I'm good.
Thank you, Council. A quick question. In the packet, there's information about the 2024 action plan. And I was wondering if you just might speak to that a little bit, and how that planning process integrates with this grant process, and what we can expect, what the community can expect in terms of that.
Sure. The action plan is part of the CDBG grant cycle. So each year, you offer a request for proposals. And then, depending on who gets awarded funding, you base your action plan, so it's a one-year action plan, on that funding, or on those awards. And so it would identify what outcomes you're expecting to happen from those activities. And all of that links back to your five-year consolidated plan, which we are in the final year of our five-year consolidated plan. If it were more competitive, if there were more applicants, we would utilize the five-year consolidated plans, well, we'd actually be utilizing what's called the CAPER, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, which shows every year what we have done in that five-year period, and which goals and priorities that we identified in the five-year consolidated plan that we have met already, or the ones that we haven't met. So we would tailor our, what we award each year, based on what we're still needing. If we had different applicants, if we had more applicants, then we could say, maybe we wouldn't award Sunstone because we would award, you know, a homeless service provider because we haven't met that goal yet, and maybe we've met the housing goal. We're rarely in that situation, but if we had been, we could look to the consolidated plan for that guidance. So the annual action plan goes with the CAPER. And that, in June, when we submit that plan, it will say, we awarded these two activities. We expect these outcomes, they meet these goals in our consolidated plan. And then in September, when we do our CAPER, we would look back at the last year's activities, and we would say, we said in our action plan that these grantees were going to meet these goals. And now that we're at the conclusion of that project, based on their reporting, here's what they did. Either did or didn't meet. So it's a mini evaluation of how your program year went. And that should inform your grant decisions moving forward, and then tie back into the consolidated plan.
I would note that the action plan is adopted by the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee, and there'll be a public hearing on it, and the plan will memorialize the awards that the council makes.
Thank you. Council Hyatt?
If the body's ready, I'm happy to make the motion.
Yes, the floor is open for a motion if there are no additional questions.
I move to award the competitively available 2024 Community Development Block Grant Funds as follows: $18,000 to the Maslow Project Public Service Project, and $125,660 in a provisional award to Sunstone Housing Collaborative.
Second.
Council Hyatt, do you care to speak to your motion?
Only that I want to be sure to thank the Housing and Human Services Commission for their recommendations and for their work on this. And also for thanking, I also want to thank our community partners, because we all know the mission of Maslow, and I'm excited to see what Sunstone has in store moving forward. The concept, as it's being presented here, I think is a very exciting one, and one that I think we, I can only speak for myself, but I think we would all be eager to see succeed.
Council Bloom?
Thank you. Yeah, I share those sentiments. And I'll also add that I think that it's nice that we're striking a really good balance between an organization that's kind of dealing with the frontline effort of housing insecurity, and then this organization coming forward to deal with the kind of more long-term solutions for housing insecurity. And, yeah, I'm really excited for what the future holds, and we're going to be taking some more of these up later on. So, yeah, thank you, all of you.
Any further discussion? Council Kaplan?
I'd like to offer an amendment. I'd like to amend the amount for Maslow by increasing it by $2,000. Yeah?
This is a required public hearing by Housing and Human Services. So before a final motion is voted upon, we should have public comment or an opportunity for it.
Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to recognize the recommendation from the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee, which was $2,000 more than the amount that was noted in the packet by the staff, recommended to staff. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the award to Maslow up $2,000, and Sunstone down $2,000.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Can I get clarity first? Because I'm willing to second it, but I don't think we have to put Sunstone down, because one is one type of fund and the other's another, correct?
No, we, it's, yeah, it's, we do have to reduce there.
We'd have to reduce? Okay. And Maslow asked for 18?
They did ask for 18, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a second for the amendment? For lack of a second, the motion fails, and we will open it up for public comment. Alyssa, do we have anyone who has signed up for public comment? Okay, the public comment has closed. Are there any further discussion points or comments anyone would like to make? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. We are now in unfinished business, the contract for the 2024 Briscoe Floor Replacement and Grant Budget Review.
Interesting being up here before nine o'clock at night.
Almost don't know what to do with your salary.
Questions?
Yes. Joke, please.
You know, so we're here tonight to talk about flooring, and I love flooring because you can't stand without it. So before the council, it's a twofold process here tonight. One is to, a request to approve a construction contract with VITUS to replace and mitigate the asbestos flooring at Briscoe School in our Phase 1 portion of the project. It's about 10,900 square feet of flooring replacement and mitigation. The other portion of tonight is to review the grant budget that we've received from the state and talk about next steps in process. So we, we did a public solicitation for the construction phase of the contract for the flooring, and VITUS Construction was the only responder with the low bid at $180,000. So that's to mitigate the flooring issue, replace the flooring, and mitigate the asbestos for the facility. In the budget review that you see in the document, based on that contract, there's about $430,000 left of grant funding for potentially Phase 2 of the flooring project and HVAC system improvements. The other thing that I want to reference tonight that has been brought up in the past with council is the, looking at structural enhancements to support solar panels on the roof. There was an email that came out a while ago from staff in discussions with a structural engineer that there would be pretty significant load issues and seismic enhancements to be able to accommodate solar on the roof. We recently enhanced that analysis and actually have a technical memo from a structural engineer, you know, reiterating that, that there's significant structural seismic enhancements that would need to be put in place to support roof load of solar. Now, one of the recommendations that came out of that report is reinforcing the roof with plywood sheathing. That was not included in the roofing bid that council previously awarded. We asked Ho Grouping, who is the contractor for the roof replacement, what that additional cost would be to add plywood structural panels to the roof to be part of that overall seismic solution. So that came back at $100,000, $107,000 addition to the roofing project. Now, that's kind of a double-edged sword to think about. It is, you're preemptively preparing for that in the future by doing this with the roof life itself. So if you want to move forward with additional seismic structural improvements to do that, you're in advance of that. And if you don't, and you move forward at some date in the future, before the end of the useful life of the roof, that whole roof would have to be torn up and redone again. So you're repaying that cost again. So that $107,000 is. So that $107,000 is another consideration for the council to add into the project in order to kind of be forward-thinking about the seismic structural stability of the building as part of a process. So there's also, within that and the remaining funds, you would lose $100,000, so you'd be to $350,000, give or take a few here or there, for the remaining improvements. Also, in your packet information, we had a cursory look at the HVAC boiler system for the facility as well. And as the report says, most of the HVAC system equipment is outdated and of its useful life as part of that. That was just the kind of the high-level look, the kind of, we could take a deeper look and develop PS and E documents, plans, specs and estimates for replacing those HVAC systems and also removing the boiler as part of a next step process. The other thing to consider is that would require significant electrical upgrades at the school and also electrical upgrades within the city's distribution system to accommodate that additional electrical loading. I think you all potentially saw an email response about us following asbestos mitigation, best management practices for the flooring removal today is part of our response in moving that forward. And also, you know, potentially looking at HVAC system improvements, moving down the road and understanding the greater impacts with the caveat that I put on it to look at what is the future facility use? Because if we don't exactly know what the future use of that facility is going to be, some improvements might be not useful for future occupation and activity within that building. Because you're sizing those heat pumps for specific zones and areas. And so if you change, you reduce or expand those zones, you know, you won't have the same heating and cooling effect or air turnover in those zones. So it's just something to consider as part of a discussion and dialogue moving forward about what is the future of that facility as part of our overall facility package as a city.
Counselor Bloom.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, to that point, since you're addressing it now. So we received this funding for, through grants to the state to do these improvements. And my question is to that point about the future use of the building. If, this is going to sound familiar to some people, if we were to use those funds to make certain improvements and then decided to divest ourselves of the building and sell the building, would that, will we run into any compliance issues with the grant?
Not to my knowledge. The grant is pretty open with those requirements. It's, here's your money, here's the improvements that were listed as part of that grant. It doesn't have a timeframe of, oh, you have to occupy, use this building, you know, or let OCDC use or occupy it. So I don't think there's any issues with us having to, or the city being obligated to pay back any of those monies as long as we follow what the grant requirements or the projects in the grant were for.
Right. Quick follow-up. So to that, because there has been a conversation that we've had about solar and, you know, certain heat pumps, HVAC. Is that, are we kind of getting out of the lane of what we need to do for that building and that maybe that's a future conversation? We're kind of getting ahead of ourselves a little bit?
So the grant, yeah.
That was a bit leading up to the question, sorry.
The grant did contemplate some HVAC system improvements in it as part of that overall process. What it didn't contemplate is the road infrastructure, electric utility improvements that would need to be done in conjunction with that to support the increased electrical load. So that would be something as part of a separate budget discussion that would need to occur.
And I think I can add a couple of details because I was on council when these conversations were happening and Representative Marsh did a great job of moving forward and helping us get to the funding that would help us protect this historic space that a lot of people love and went to school there and keep it as a school, but do the necessary upgrades to protect its physical structure while we figured out that longer-term purpose for that building and how we were going to deal with it. But at the moment, at that time, the roof repair was definitely right at the top of that list. We knew we had asbestos in the flooring and in different places of it. That all needed to be mitigated. And then we also had that conversation about the HVAC system and the fact that that entire mechanical system is so old that it's going to have to be replaced at some point, so let's look at all of that together. They, they, we got a very nice grant for that, and I'm really heartened to see that there is likely to be some additional funding that we can really look at the HVAC system with. That, those estimates were done before all of the cost escalations of the last couple of years. And so now I think we're in a balancing act of trying to figure these pieces out. But it certainly, I think that that larger question of what is the long-term use of the building is something that the council will have to take up. Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so Scott, if I heard this right, the HVAC improvements would be farther down the line, right?
So what we would need to do is bring on a mechanical engineering consultant firm who specializes in HVAC system analysis and upgrades and have them develop a plan for those improvements while understanding that we're meeting building code as part of those updates and they could develop cost estimates for that. And we'd also, as I said, have to look at the electrical upgrades to the panels at Briscoe and also what it would take to support that load from the engineering distribu-, or the electrical distribution system. And that would be coordination with Tom and the electric department as part of that process. We could then bring that information back to the council, also understanding too that there's a Phase Two of the flooring project to consider, you know, and you can look and compare those costs. We'll have HVAC system costs. We expect right now that Phase Two of the flooring project will be substantially similar in cost. It's less square footage, but it's more furniture and partition moving, so there's more labor in order to get it organized for the replacement. So I think that that's the potential future consideration and discussion for council to determine the next steps.
If I, part two. Thanks, Scott. Something that I, and I'm glad to see there's movement at Briscoe because it's much, much needed, a repair. And you mentioned $107,000 for roofing, right? But, and that's just to kind of the infrastructure to prepare it for solar panels?
So that's, that is one of the many steps that you would put in place to bring the building up to current seismic code, of which would allow for solar panel installation on the roof. You would still have to do some wall bracing and strengthening as part of that. But, you know, the consideration came about since we're re-roofing the project right now, if you add that structure to it, you get to take advantage of that for the life of the roof and not have to worry about it in case something happens and you move forward with other improvements for the facility to bring it up to current seismic code. So if it doesn't get done now and say in five or 10 years before the useful life of the roof is gone, you would lose that investment in the roof. It would have to be removed completely and redone with that addition. So you're dealing with the cost inflation of the roof and the construction project in the future, but also that structural rehab for the roof itself.
Yeah, and I appreciate, I appreciated being up to code and being structurally in place. I think that's important. Solar panels, we could talk about that later, but I think it has to be in good condition.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you, Scott. Two questions, really. I have a friend who works at Briscoe and I assured her that the asbestos abatement removal will be done in a really safe way, so the students and the employees, teachers, staff there are all safe. And it sounds like it's happening in two phases. Wondering when that construction schedule would start? She was, she was curious and just for the record, I wanted to get it out there.
So our facility staff, project manager, who's leading this project on our side, has been working with OCDC to, and the contractor, to establish that schedule in order to minimize the impact of OCDC's operation. They essentially operate year-round. They have some quiet time in that facility, but not very much. So based on that initial schedule, we're looking at beginning in early July and finishing in mid-September. And that includes the complete construction phase. So that's the floor removal, mitigation, floor installation, fixture installation in the bathrooms and all that stuff, and then moving all the furniture and appurtenances back into place. And to build onto that, the law requires you to have a certified asbestos abatement contractor do that work. So they have to have the level of experience and training and be certified to do that work, of which Vitus has a body, a group that will do that for them.
And I've seen these projects in action before and there's lots of sequestering of different spaces and, you know, really acute attention to where, how air is moving around and taped off.
And PPE?
Yep, yep.
Personal protective equipment for everyone working in that area.
And then the students and the staff are safe in their zone while the workers are safe in their zone.
Yep.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. And then it's interesting to, to look at the sheathing project. It's great to do, you know, steps when you're in action that would future-proof going back and doing other work, but that's a big, you know, $107,000 curveball. Do you have any ideas or thoughts on if we wanted to move forward with, with that, you know, infrastructure, how, how we would insert that into the plan and pay for it?
That would be part of the grant funding. So it would reduce your available grant portion moving forward for other improvements.
Right, it would just, it would just.
So it would come off the top because it would be part of the roofing project itself. So your available funding would reduce, at this point in time, from $487,000 to $380,000.
Okay, and that's not something that we're deciding and talking about tonight?
It, I put it up there because it's under consideration, I believe, because we're talking about the budget and the remainder for the process and next steps. So it came up real quick last week in information that we received on the structural report that if you're doing this, the recommendation is to kind of future-protect yourself to add that sheathing up there to the roof. The, the double-edged sword is the timing on when the next steps and what will be done with the building. It can be fast, it can be slow. And, you know, if something changes quickly, you know, it's a good idea. If something doesn't change quickly and it takes years, you never know.
And what's our usable life on that roof?
I want to say it's either a 35- or 50-year membrane.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will take up that guidance to staff as a separate question, so we'll, we'll make sure that we get to both of these before we move on. Counselor Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thank you, especially for the joke. My, my question is, you know, in conversation, I asked you what the current condition of the tiles were. Are we starting to see, we know they're at the end of their, their useful life, are they starting to break down? You kindly shared your response with me, but I wanted to make sure that the team had the full benefit of that question.
So there are sections that have been broken down and been replaced by Briscoe/OCDC as part of their maintenance operations. They're starting to see more and more degradation of the tiles. And so that was why we intended to move forward and mitigate all of that in one shot. You know, when the tile covering and the mastic is encapsulated and controlled, it's not considered friable. But once it breaks and gets exposed, then it's considered friable. So part of a general maintenance operation is you wax and seal those floors and you make sure that that stays in good repair. But once that wax and covering diminishes, you can see additional breaks and fractures of the tile and then it becomes friable. As you saw in some of the pictures, the molding around the flooring on the perimeter walls is in very bad condition. And that asbestos material, plus the mastic, the black mastic glue used to adhere that is, you know, asbestos-containing. So that's a concern overall from the function. So you got to think, some of it, yes, it looks good and it's in good condition, but that doesn't keep it from being damaged and becoming friable in that system, especially considering it's a walkway that's used or, you know, in foot traffic in the facility itself.
Counselor Bloom?
Thank you. So my question is around certain contingencies. If we get into this project and there's delays or something comes up, and what happens to OCDC? Are we in conversations with the school district? Are we going to help facilitate some solutions so they have somewhere to go, so we don't just leave them hanging?
So what we would do, and this is my kind of quick-thinking answer, is we would apply the triage approach. We would get done what we could get done, mitigate and restore, and then reschedule the work activities if we ran into an issue to ensure that they still had access and use of the facility. You know, they, we could probably do some work where they can use the gymnasium too for part of the activity. So our project guys, Michael J. and Jason Straight, are always in contact and discussion with them, you know. And that was a huge upfront discussion was developing that original schedule with the contractor and OCDC to minimize impact, but also know that the contractor could meet that schedule that we put together.
Follow-up, follow-up. Would there be interest or value in maybe starting a conversation, at least with the school district and saying, you know, what, what spaces are available in case something? I'm just thinking, worst-case scenario situation, we don't want anybody to be left hanging, we need to get the project done. We don't want to, you know, throw patches on it and then keep delaying and delaying and delaying.
Yeah, and I think they had some of that discussion as part of the roof project in case some issues came up as part of the roofing. So we would just build on that with OCDC and other partners. I know that OCDC had reached out to talk to others about what can we do on the triage effort to, you know, keep our, our operation moving forward. So that's something I think that, you know, staff and project management staff can continue that conversation with OCDC and have some sort of emergency redundancy backup system in place that we're all comfortable with.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I, going back to the electrical system issues that are existing for that facility in terms of fuel switching. And I know you're not Tom, so if you can't answer this question, that's okay. But, but we are in the middle of an electric utility master planning process. And I'm wondering, I know that we've had these conversations before about just that the feeder line into that particular neighborhood is not as robust as it needs to be. Is that something, or have you had any conversations with Tom about addressing that part of this difficulty just through our regular electric utility master planning process?
I have not specifically had that conversation with Mr. McBarlet about that or other electric improvements. We do have those conversations when we develop the CIP to talk about our roadway projects and things like that for the economy of scale, but we don't have roadway infrastructure or other changes in that corridor. So it hasn't come up recently in conversation for electric utility upgrades.
But that's something that potentially some council direction in terms of prioritization might, we might look to have that conversation when we're looking at the utility master plan process.
Correct.
That's a possibility.
Correct.
Okay, great. So that was my question. Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. I'm curious, when is the roofing schedule starting to, looking to kick off?
That's my teaser right now. I don't know off the top of my head what that final schedule looks like. I'd have to get that from Michael and Jason and send it out to the council.
And is that sheer strength that the plywood's adding? I think that's what it is, so that doesn't twist.
Lateral loads, yep.
Is that required for seismic upgrades regardless? Because solar may be four pounds per square foot, might be eight pounds per square foot, but I think it might just be the needed.
It's the general loading, yes. It's bringing the facility up to the current code irregardless of, you know, what you add onto it. You know, if, if you're putting more load onto it, you know, you're going to have to go to a thicker plywood. But in the initial calculations that we looked at, the half-inch plywood and the potential weight of the solar, we meet that code and the weight addition that solar would put on there for the future.
Yeah, so I'm just curious if, if looking down Briscoe's roof future, whether we're going to have to do that regardless when we do seismic upgrades to the other parts of the building, that's going to be a consideration regardless of what other things we put on that roof?
That is correct. And also occupation and use changes of the building could trigger those code requirements. So it'd be irregardless, you might change the use of the structure and that will kick in those code requirements that you would have to. in those code requirements that you would have to update the building to the current code.
I wonder why we didn't catch that when we were doing the roofing bid and the planning process previously, why it wasn't, why we didn't include that in the HOG bid?
Yeah, I don't think, well, we didn't have any sort of structural analysis done at that point. You know, I will say it was critical mass that the roof be replaced because we were dealing with serious leaks.
Leaks.
And so that was the primary focus.
One good question will do another.
Yeah, and then, of course, you always, on a lot of these projects, as you know, find the domino effect. You know, I push this one over, I got more information, I push this one over, I get more information. And so with the information we had, we were trying to make the best decision to move this forward to get this roof replaced in a timely fashion. Because we were mitigating leaks, OCDC was mitigating leaks, and those leaks, as you know, create additional dry rot, mold issues that you would potentially have to mitigate. So it was a matter of taking care of this first initial round of business.
So it sounds like we have an opportunity to move forward with the flooring contract and also make an amendment to do the roof right, so we don't have to go back and do any additional work on the roof. Should we, I mean, should we get triggered for structural upgrades for seismic? It's something that we're going to need to do regardless.
Yes, and we'll take those up as two separate questions. Counselor Bloom?
Yeah, just to clarify on that. So, you know, you said earlier, though, that if we were to decide to use the building for a completely different purpose, there would be different code requirements. So I guess my question is, if we were to move forward with this for the roof, would we meet every possible code requirement? Because I guess I don't want to get into a situation where we do this and then we're having a conversation and decide to change the use of the building to something else and then say, well, that was for nothing, we have to go back and change something.
So you're still going to have to change stuff, but it's going to be wall strength. You wouldn't have to go back, how we've looked at it, and make any adjustments to the roof based on the change, because you've already made that change to get it to the current code. So you'd still have to look at, you know, reinforcement of the masonry and the vertical walls and things like that to meet the loading. But how I understand it in our discussions, you wouldn't have to go back and make a change to the roof during the life cycle, lifespan of the roof itself.
That box would be checked.
That box is checked.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions for Scott at this point on the floor contract? And then we'll come back to the roof as a separate question. Okay, the floor is open for a motion. Counselor Bloom?
I move to award a public improvement contract to Vitus Construction for project number 2019-27, Briscoe Flooring Replacement in the amount of $188,990.
Counselor Hyatt?
I'll second.
Counselor Bloom?
No, I have nothing to say.
Counselor Hyatt?
I think it's prudent that we definitely get the floor work done. I mean, we're talking the health and safety of our tenants, which are children, families, and the staff that works there. So I'm 110% supportive of this work, and it is in keeping with the original conversations that the council body at the time the grant was awarded and the goals that we wanted to attain. So it's for that reason that I'm happy to support this motion.
Any additional discussion? Roll call, please, Alyssa. Kaplan?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Thank you, and now we will take up the question. I assume at this point that you just need staff direction, or do you need a formal motion?
It's within our change order ability, so I'm just looking for staff direction on the roof component of it.
Great, okay. Any additional questions for Scott regarding the roof and the added cost? Counselor Bloom?
Can I just add a comment that I really would love to have a conversation, all of us, about Briscoe and the future of it? So whenever that's appropriate, but I just wanted to put that on the record, that I think we should have that conversation.
The intention when this was first put forward and Representative Marsh helped us get the funding was that we would go through these repairs and expend the grant funding so that that was all completed. And then the city would, it would be ready to make whatever that longer-term decision is. So I think continuing on with that, that's when we would take it up, but we could potentially start talking about it before the final repairs are done. We just, I think at this point, we are, we're needing to move through with the grant timing before we actually make any changes to it. Scott?
And I will say for the council and everybody that the FCA Facility Condition Assessment being performed by McKinstry will also provide additional information for the council to consider, and we'll have to have some level of discussion with ORW about the facility planning study portion of it, because Briscoe is one of the facilities in the city's ownership. So that will be coming at some point later when we have the information on the FCA completed and start that facility planning portion of it. So we'll be here before council, and that will partly be a preliminary discussion, I believe, for the future of that building.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, and although this is a higher-level, long-term planning for this facility, I would just like to assure OCDC that the city doesn't have any short-term plans to give them the boot or somehow change use of that building right now. It's been asked before, and I would just like to formally say, answer that we don't have any intentions to do anything in the near future.
No, there's no intention.
Right.
Counselor Duquesne?
Thank you. So Scott, I just want to be clear, going back to the roof, is that the $107,000, that would bring the roofing up to code, right?
That portion of the code for seismic structural stability, correct.
Okay, and is that part of the grant money?
Correct.
Correct, okay, I'm good.
Any additional questions? Any comments? Counselor Kaplan? Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I had a comment. So thanks, Scott, for this surprise. I don't love the extra cost, but I also don't see any point in putting a 35- to 50-year roof on that, you know, that doesn't, you know, meet this code. So thanks for catching it at this time. I'm kind of shuddering to think that we could have actually put a roof on there and then had to replace it sometime later, or whatever ends up happening with that building would have to replace it. Thank you.
Or the future occupant.
Future occupant.
Counselor Dale?
I would just say that I wholeheartedly agree with what Counselor Kaplan said. The cost is not going down to do this anytime.
And I think that this also puts a finer point on the need for the facilities assessment that we've, that we have, so that we can tier to a roadmap that is very clear about what the structural needs are in our different buildings. We obviously recognize that there were significant structural needs in this building, and we're able to go get some assistance to deal with them. But having your team work through that process with our contractors, I think is going to be a really important piece of making sure that we catch these questions and we are able to make the best taxpayer investment that we can. I also want to just, you know, the council will do what it will do, but I'm hopeful that we will go through with this additional sheeting, because even though we are not required to at this moment, these are seismic upgrades in a school. And I think that that's maybe the most important part of this question about this sheeting. And so I would just like to offer that to the conversation. Any additional comments or thoughts?
I guess I have another question. Sorry, I don't mean to prolong it, but your comment about the facilities' master planning process, it's linked, the use of the building is linked to the condition of the building. In this particular case, if we hadn't given instruction to the consultants about any kind of potential change of use, would they have done the assessment for seismic because it's not, it doesn't trigger the seismic changes because there's not change of use?
So generally, what we do in these things is look at the deficiency between the existing condition and the current condition of what it should be under code.
Under code, regardless of the need to trigger.
Yeah, you know, we're not just waiting for a trigger. It's like, okay, we know this building is deficient because it was constructed this time, this was the code, the code is here now, what's that gap and what does it look like?
So we would have found this two months, three months from now within that assessment?
Yeah, correct, we would have seen where we're short.
Thanks.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Alyssa? Oh, pardon me? Oh, I thought we had one. Okay, well, the floor.
I think we were looking for a head nod.
Right, staff direction. So you, is nod of heads that we're going forward with the sheeting? Yes, okay, then now you've got your staff direction, thank you. We are now moving on, did you have something else, Scott?
There would be staff direction from the council on moving forward with looking at the HVAC structure would also be kind of a subcomponent of this with the additional budget monies, kind of as I referenced, more formally developing some plant specs and estimate documents for consideration to move forward. And also coordination with Tom and the Electric Department on some level of costing for street infrastructure for consideration as well.
Counselor Hyatt?
I think it's fully appropriate and in the spirit of this grant that once the roofing, the additional 107, both of the flooring contracts are covered, that the remaining 380 absolutely go toward the feasibility of the HVAC and how that should look and any preliminary work that can be done, because that was the intent with which the money was awarded.
Yes, it's the fourth use of that in that list.
So I think that that use is completely prudent and appropriate. I wish it could cover it all, but I want it to do as much as it can for me personally in my opinion.
Does, is, are there any concerns about Scott and his staff moving forward with the HVAC process? Counselor Hanson?
As I hear it, we are, we are planning, we're talking with the Electrical Department about electrical upgrades, we're getting cost estimates, we're not spending money yet. We need to, we need to see what the whole picture is before we can either, you know, take it all and do it, or piecemeal and find additional funds. And that seems totally appropriate. Scott's just asking to dig deeper.
So Scott, just to confirm, the council would, could expect to see your team come back with the results of this deeper dive analysis into the HVAC system, as well as a plan that says how much of this could we get done with the remaining grant funds? And then what is the appropriate phasing in a proposal format? Is that what we can expect to see?
Yeah, kind of an alternatives option analysis, looking at what we have funding-wise. I want to gain the enlightenment of the FCA from McKinstry before I really engage an engineering firm to start doing stuff, because that'll have some facility background information that I think will be super useful to engage a design firm to develop plans and specs and cost estimates. So when we have that, then I can think about logistically moving to the next steps and then bring that bundled at some point to the council in the future for discussion.
Great, great, thank you. So I think you've got the direction that you need?
Correct.
Great, well, thank you, Scott, you and your team. I know it's always a constant battle of more work that needs to be done than resources to do it, so I appreciate the hard work at getting these other elements to come in as low costs as we can get them done so that we've still got room for the HVAC system as much as possible.
Thank you, I will let the team know.
Great, thank you. We are now at what I think is going to be the highlight of the evening. Last fall, I put out a call for the If I Were Mayor contest. And the If I Were Mayor contest is a contest that the Oregon Mayors Association does every year, and the way that it works is that mayors in their localities put out a call to their young people, and there's, there are ways for them to enter into the contest of all ages. And so this is the first year that we have done this. The winners move on to the state, the state contest, and so I have sent our two winners on to the state contest already, and we will learn how they do in terms of that in the next couple of months. But the final state-level awards are awarded in July. And so we have with us this evening our two winners for 2024. And I will, what I will do is tell you a little bit about our two winners, and then I will ask them to come up, where they'll receive their award, and then they will try out the chair, so. Looking forward to this. Our first, indeed, they do. So our middle school winner is Avalon Gurk. She is in the eighth grade at Willow Wind, and she put forward an essay, and she managed in the course of her essay to tackle a variety of challenges and ideas. So from how best to support our unhoused population, economic, to economic development, and maintaining our parks and boosting revenue streams, all in one tight essay. And I thought to myself, someone who understands the myriad things that this council and the community government, city government do, that's quite something to get all into one place. I also was very impressed with Avalon's ability to move in that place of balance between what is an individual's responsibility in their life and to their community, and what is the community's responsibility in its life and to the individual residents in its town. That is a very sophisticated space in terms of thinking, it's very nuanced, and it is not something I would have been able to generate in the eighth grade. So I very much appreciate her application and her essay. The second winner is Amber Richards. She is in fourth grade at the Trails Outdoor School. And Amber put forward the poster, and it looks like Alyssa's going to bring it in, it's been out in the, in the front, or maybe Chief can help us bring it in. Amber drew this poster, and in her poster, she was able to bring in public safety in terms of wildfire risk reduction, infrastructure related to bike lanes and the safety of our pedestrians, and also livability in terms of making sure that there are community gardens in all of our new large housing developments. And so when I look at this picture, I see this vibrant, wonderful, welcoming, friendly Ashland. And we were so fortunate to be able to have her step forward with her exciting vision for what Ashland's future looks like. So I have had the good privilege to be able to speak with both of our essay winners, our contest winners, and I can tell you that without a doubt, Ashland or any other community would be well-served to have either one of them be their mayor at whatever point in their life they choose to take up the gavel. I want to also thank all of our applicants as well as their parents and their teachers. We sometimes forget that this experiment we have in self-governance is new in the world of human history, and it takes work, it takes dedicated people, and we learn that from our community, from our parents, from our teachers. So to everyone who is helping our young people understand the importance of local government, thank you. And I would like to now call up our two winners, Avalon and Amber. Please come up here, I will give you your awards, and then you'll, we'll put you through on the chair.
Welcome, congratulations.
And then we'll take a photo with them at the end. And parents can come up and take pictures if you want. And Avalon? So you have the parents come on up? Well, we'll do one here, and then I'll bring Avalon in. And now each one of you will get a chance at the seat, so why don't we have you start, Amber? I'll move my stuff out of the way. And whatever you would like to say, can you just speak into the microphone, have a seat here, and then whenever you're done speaking, just close it out with this gavel. All right, there you are.
Thank you. It's crazy that I'm sitting in the chair where the mayor of Ashland sits, and at this table where all of the most important decision-makers of Ashland sit to do all their table where all of the most important decision makers of Ashland sit to do all their law making business. And I just want to thank everyone here for doing such a great job in making Ashland so great.
Two of you will be right here alongside me. And then everyone, if you can come in around and then Sabrina, if you can get a photo for us? Can you tuck in anyone? And with that, we are going to recess for eight minutes. Please be back in your seats at 7:40. Oh, you're fine. Next item in new business, which is the 2023-25 biennial supplemental budget and resolution, revenue recognition and budget appropriations for the fire department.
Hello? Just wanted to check that it was working. Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. Mary Ann Berry, Finance Director. I am presenting to you a supplemental budget to recognize revenue for the 23-25 biennium. There are two resources to recognize. First, the $500,000. That is interest income earned above and beyond what was forecasted and budgeted for the biennium. This amount has requested to be appropriated towards Ashland Forest Lands Climate Adaptation Project or wildfire mitigation through the logging project that was approved in the March 19th regular business meeting. Second is $174,000. This amount is part of the larger Oregon State University grant of $284,000. That was awarded to Ashland Fire and Rescue to support community smoke and wildfire planning and adapt with the EPA wildfire smoke preparedness in community buildings grant funding. That's a mouthful. Schools, preschools and childcare centers will receive air quality monitoring, technical assistance, training and interventions for better smoke preparedness. While the grant is $284,000, we are only recognizing what we know we will expend in the current biennium as the grant is on a reimbursement basis. Thus before you is $174,000 budget supplemental for that grant award. And we will recognize the remaining grant amount in the next biennium. Any questions?
Councilor Hanson?
Hi, Mary Ann. Thanks for coming up and thanks for answering our questions.
You bet.
And in our, in our conversations earlier, when you were explaining it to me, we have a remaining balance that we could utilize in your, I just heard you say the $109,695 could be utilized, not in this biennium, but in the next biennium.
Staff projected that that wouldn't be expended within this biennium. So we weren't going to recognize it for this biennium, but it is going to be available for us to recognize, recognize it when and if we're ready, when we're ready to spend it.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
So we've found half a million dollars. We're, we're putting to great use and, and then we have this awesome grant. So this is, this is all very exciting for the city of Ashland. So I'm enthused. Thank you.
You bet.
Any additional questions? And, and Mary Ann, I wonder if you might just speak a little bit to how we, how we came about with this increase in, in interest income?
Sure. So it's two-tiered. We have been accumulating funds from the previous biennium. So our ending fund balances were a little bit higher, but beyond that as well, we also decided to start to actively manage our investments by getting, going a little further or longer on the yield curve. In doing so, we're able to take advantage of interest rates to the extent that we're gaining another 100 basis points on top of our normal investments, which are in the local government investment pool. So 100 basis points on 70 million is, well, it's not 70 million. Sorry about that. It's about 20 million is the allocation that we have put towards longer term investments under our investment policy.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any remaining questions? The floor is open for a motion. Councilor Dale?
I move to adopt resolution 2024-10 authorizing a 2023-25 biennial supplemental budget.
One second, that.
Councilor Dale?
Absolutely. Just a, again, just a huge thank you for your, you and your team's outstanding job with the financial steward, stewardship of, of the city's funding. I mean, that's just wonderful. It's, it's, keep doing what you're doing.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Councilor Hanson?
Yes, likewise. Thank you so much for your fiscal responsibility and the ability to do all of this good work with, you know, grant money and, and, you know, investment earnings from taxpayer money is, is just a, it's dreamy. Thank you.
Any additional comments or thoughts? Roll call, please, Alyssa? Duquesne?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Next, we have the agreement between the City of Ashland and Ashland Police Association, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2026.
Good evening. Molly Taylor, HR Director.
Ty O'Meara, Police Chief.
And we are presenting to you the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Ashland and the Ashland Police Association. The members of the police association voted unanimously to approve the agreement and we are bringing it to you tonight to get council approval as well.
Questions? Councilor Duquesne?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing this in front of us. But my question is, I understand the importance of this and the need for it. My question is, this expired in June, June 30th of 2023 and the payment will be retroactive. And my question is, I understand the need, but not the process. Why are we just now getting this?
So it, it was a lot of back and forth and that takes time. And so that's, I guess I don't know.
I've never known a police contract to not be retroactive. I think it's typical for contracts to be retroactive. And last year, I, and I'm not trying to speak outside my lane, but I know that the city was negotiating every or several labor contracts and it's just a process that takes a long time. So it's not unusual for it to be retroactive. I've never seen it get done before the current contract expires.
Well, and, and I can understand that, but it's just that if you know that a labor contract is coming up, to be more proactive and, and moving forward, I think is important. Because I was reading, it said that 4.5% increase for all positions in the bargaining unit. And, and just looking at the first year, it's $72,352. Is that total? And when you say per unit, what does that mean?
So all the positions that are within the Ashland Police Association? So the total of all the positions, the cost for the increase is $72,000. So that's spread across the positions for the entire year of the contract. So you may recall that we have been negotiating all contracts for the last two years within the city. So that's five total. This one was delayed a bit. We did not get the letter from APA until a bit later because we were in the process of negotiating the fire contract. So that delayed it as well.
And, Councilor, I just, I just add that even if the city side of that conversation wanted to do things in a more timely manner, it's not something that we can do unilaterally. It's by definition, a, a give and take, a push and pull. And so the, the contract, the, the union side of it sometimes strategically wants to delay their side of the conversation. So some part of this is out of our control.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate the clarity.
Any additional questions? The floor is open for a motion? Councilor Bloom?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the three-year contract ratifying the tentative agreements reached in negotiations with the Ashland Police Association and authorize interim city manager and mayor to sign the three-year contract.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate the, the hard work that our officers do. It's often very thankless. And I think increasingly we're seeing municipalities, communities asking of police much more than what they traditionally do. So I appreciate that we're getting here. We're, we're competitive with the rest of the valley. It's well deserved and it was, you know, collective bargaining. So here we are and thank you for the work that you did to get us here.
Councilor Dale?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Chief, as I read the packet here and sometimes we just kind of skip past it, but policies, plans and goals supported excellence in government, governance and city services. And I know that goes for all of our city departments, but I just want you to know and, and the, the Ashland Police Department Association, just how incredibly proud we are of the professionalism that they show. Experienced it firsthand a couple, three weeks ago. Finally got around to doing a, a ride along and, and there was, there was an incident that was out of the police control. It was just, you know, it was what I would call a medical.
in negotiations with the Ashland Police Association and authorize interim city manager and mayor to sign the three-year contract.
I'll second.
Oh, sorry.
Counselor Bloom.
Yeah, no, I just, I appreciate the, the hard work that our officers do. It's often very thankless, and I think increasingly we're seeing municipalities, communities asking of police much more than what they traditionally do. So I appreciate that we're getting here. We're competitive with the rest of the valley. It's well-deserved, and it was, you know, collective bargaining. So here we are, and thank you for the work that you did to get us here.
Counselor Dale.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief, as I read the packet here, and sometimes we just kind of skip past it, but policies, plans, and goals supported excellence in government, governance, and city services. And I know that goes for all of our city departments, but I just want you to know and, and the Ashland Police Department and Association, just how incredibly proud we are of the professionalism that they show. Experienced it firsthand a couple, three weeks ago. I finally got around to doing a ride-along, and there was, there was an incident that was out of the police control. It was just, you know, it was what I would call a medical call more than anything. And just the, the empathy with which the officers showed, it was, I don't know how I would have handled it. And, and this was, as you and I were having a private conversation a while back, and at, you know, when we're at home, all of us, any one of us at any given time is having, could be possibly having the worst night of our lives. And we've all experienced it. And for your department and those officers to show up and help a family through an extremely difficult situation was, it was emotionally taxing on me from 100 yards away, and I just, I just could not be more grateful for the Ashland Police Department and what we have here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Any additional comments? Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Please pass along to your team that we appreciate their good work.
I will. Thank you.
We now move to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Awards. And I, before we get started, I, while I don't have a financial conflict of interest, the, the rules for the City of Ashland go a little bit further than that. And because I have been working to, working closely with, with one of the applicants, not in any way related to their application here, there has been a firewall up about that. But I should not participate in this conversation, so I have arranged with Counselor Hyatt. She will take over the meeting. I will recuse myself. And then if someone can come and get me when you're finished, that would be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So next on our agenda is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Award, and we have back with us Linda Reed and Echo Field. So I will turn it over to you all for the presentation. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us. So I should preface this by saying that we don't normally do all three of the grants that the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee oversees in the same year. It just happened that way this time. So this year, we did offer $350,000 in Affordable Housing Trust Fund grants. The city received four applications totaling 440,000 in competitive, or, yeah, anyway. On March 25th, 2024, the City of Ashland's Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee conducted a public hearing and evaluated the grant requests and heard presentations from the applicants and made an award recommendation. The Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee and the staff's recommendations are consistent. And the applicants were Ashland Community Land Trust Organizing Committee, and these are all in your packet, so you probably saw them. They are looking at consulting and other professional services to establish a community land trust in Ashland for the development of affordable housing to households earning up to 120% of area median income. They're requesting $40,000. And in your packet, you can see the sort of overview evaluation that staff did. Habitat for Humanity of Rogue Valley is requesting $100,000 for land acquisition to develop for affordable homeownership units. Options for, oops, Opportunities for Housing Resources and Assistance is requesting 200,000 in funding to support their resource navigation to help homeless people attain housing. And Sunstone Housing Collaborative also applied for $100,000 to buy down the cost of the land acquisition in the same manner as we spoke about in the CDBG program. So both staff and the Housing and Human Services Commission made the same recommendation, and that was to recommend $40,000 to the Ashland Community Land Trust Organizing Committee, $100,000 to Habitat for Humanity, $155,000 to Opportunities for Housing Resources and Assistance, one day I'm going to really get that, and $55,000 to Sunstone. So we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Question, Counselor Bloom.
Thank you. Yes, this is a tricky one, because unlike the CDBG, there's less money than people are requesting. So I was wondering if you could kind of fill us in on why it is that, that Sunstone was awarded or recommended to be awarded half of what they requested?
It's because, similar to the earlier discussion about provisional award of CDBG, they're just not as far along. They, and I don't know, things may have changed by today. But when we met, they did not yet have a letter of agreement with the school district about the property, about buying the land. So that was still up in the air and still pretty vague. And they don't have lined up yet a nonprofit developer. So because of that uncertainty, that's why we were being cautious. And the community land trust group's a little bit further along in their planning, a little bit better organized, fleshed out their proposal a little bit more, has already started working with a nonprofit developer, the name of which is escaping me right now, but there is one.
Jackie Keo.
Thank you.
And their application was very straightforward. The activity is pretty simple and easy to execute and complete in a timely manner.
And then Habitat, of course, is a, is a proven entity.
Right.
And with Sunstone, they applied for all three pots of money, got some money from all three pots. So that's sort of the factors in our decision.
Could a quick follow-up, this is kind of, I guess, a process question. I understand with the last grant, there was an opportunity to have folks come forward. Is it the same here? Can we ask, because I, I don't know if anybody from Sunstone is here, but I would like to get clarification if there is any movement with the district.
There is someone from Sunstone here, and certainly she can, she's willing to come.
Hi. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Hi. My name is Krista Palmer. I'm the ED of Sunstone, the newly formed nonprofit, as you've been aware. So, yeah, since we submitted the application for the grant, we have just continued in our, in our process of developing an RFP in conjunction with the HMK, which is the school district's contractor. And so we are in the final, final processes of finishing that up, and we're hoping to release that soon. We do have an MOU drawn up that we are working on connecting with the school district and having, so, so all that to say, timing, like, we're doing the things that we need to do to move forward. It's just a matter of, you know, the school district, the, the board finalizing the agreement for that, and then moving forward and releasing the RFP. I don't know if that, I hope that makes sense. But, yeah, we, we've retained an attorney that we're working with just to assure that our due diligence is maintained and, yeah.
I appreciate that. You have a proposed timeline that you were kind of hoping to have things moving, construction starting in December, and next May, there's potential for people to maybe even start moving in. Is that still, still shooting for that?
I mean, that was our very generous interpretation of, of our, our hope timeline based on getting the RFP out early spring. But just due to circumstances out of our control, you know, and with the way that things move slowly sometimes with these things, that, that may be prolonged. One of the reasons that we were shooting for that timeline is because some of the funding sources for those, for the 80, 80%, and lower AMI housing developers, a lot of that money is coming up right around now. You know, so that was our goal. But we are, yeah, we're, we're doing everything that we can to make this move forward in a timely fashion, primarily just to keep it open to as many respondents as possible. And that goes for those, those developers and groups that have, have access or that will need access to those, those monies that are becoming available soon, so that they can apply for them.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward.
Any other question?
You have likewise?
Yes.
For the same, okay. Please, still hang out with us, Ms. Palmer. Go ahead, Counselor Hanson.
While you're here, Ms. Palmer, thank you for the, the site map and all the information. But I'm just wondering if you could share with the community, just like broad strokes, what this project looks like.
It looks like, like the physical vision.
Two buildings, one, one property that's in units.
Yeah, so one property, the, I mean, our big vision is taking into consideration best practices that we have looked into and learned from other developments in other states. That includes a lot of school districts that have also taken on, taken on projects similar to this. One thing that is of top importance to us is to have an integrated community. So that's mixed income, a variety of 80% and lower AMI and 80 to 120 AMI. The ideal of that is that the units are indistinguishable from one another. So in an effort to, you know, fully integrate the residents into the community and have it be a cohesive space for everyone that lives there. Sorry.
Maybe just to get a little simpler, like, what do the buildings look like?
Yeah, as far as the structures, we are not sure yet. Those are, that would be up to the developers that.
Do you envision townhouses or apartments or?
A combination. You know, that's a potential combination. You know, we, we really want to provide a significant amount of housing for families, so that includes townhomes, potential single-family and apartments. But like I said, you know, that is something that we will hope to work out more details upon, you know, who responds to the RFPs. But we're looking at the data of who needs, who needs homes, you know, and, and for the school district, you know, primarily looking at providing homes for families with children. So, you know, that indicates a specific size of, of dwelling, for sure.
Great. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm glad I had the opportunity. Thank you for sharing.
That's okay.
And good luck with your endeavors. It's a great project.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me make, do any other counselors have a question before we go to second round? All right, go ahead.
Last question, I promise.
That's okay, Dylan.
Do you feel that if you were awarded the full 100,000 requested, that it would help move this process along and keep you on that timeline for May of next year?
Honestly, I, I don't believe that the amount of money is going to necessarily increase the likelihood of that timeline moving forward. I think really the things that, that are keeping us on the, on the timeframe that we are now are just doing our due diligence and completing the RFP, making sure that everything that's in there needs to be in there, and establishing our relationship and agreement with the school district. Those are the two things that first and foremost we want to make sure, and those are not contingent upon the financial awards. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does to a point, and I, I hope that, I hope that we see you back here next year and that we can award you much more money, because I certainly would be prepared to at this moment.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward and helping with our questions last minute. Appreciate it.
Of course. Is that all?
I think for, yes, yes. Thank you. And we can have Linda and Echo come on back up. Any other questions from counselors? Yes, Counselor Kaplan.
Yes, thank you. And thanks, and thanks, Krista, for those, for those, those explanations. Linda, I just have a question. This is not awarded with that same provisional wording. That's because we don't need to for this source of money? Is that the distinction?
That's correct. Yeah.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. Linda and Echo, again, thank you so much for all this hard work and all your recommendations. I'm curious, backing out, our first round of funding was HUD money. And could you identify the source for this, this income?
So this is marijuana tax money that the city dedicated in 2018 to this housing trust fund account, which is in the general fund.
All right. Thank you very much.
If the body's ready, we can entertain a motion.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Counselor Hanson.
Thank you. I'm scrolling. Okay, I move to award the 2024 Affordable Housing Trust Funds as follows. $40,000 to the Ashland Community Land Trust Organizing Committee, $100,000 to Habitat Housing Proposal, $155,000 to Aura, and $55,000 to Sunstone Housing Collective.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I saw Counselor Kaplan first.
It's okay.
It doesn't matter.
We're, we're all on the same page.
Same team. Counselor Hanson, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, in this award, we have some new organizations, like the Ashland Community Land Trust Organizing Committee, which I see our Chair, Linda Peterson Adams, here. It's a new organization that is looking for opportunities to make affordable housing projects happen here in Ashland. There is money from the Habitat Housing Proposal to buy land over by, between B and A Street, just a couple blocks away from here. Operational money for Aura to continue their great navigation services, and then more, I would call it seed money, more money for the Sunstone Housing Collective to work on their very specific project on the other side of the street here from city council and the, the police station. So this is amazing work going into our community here with one of our highest priorities, which is affordable housing and livability here in Ashland. So I'm, I'm very happy to put this motion forward, but it's really on, on the work of all of these organizations and staff that has brought this forward. So I, I just send a lot of gratitude that way.
Counselor Kaplan.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to once again thank the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee for the work that they did on this, and staff, of course. This is a really awesome initiative from the City of Ashland, the, for the last, going through several biennia now of dedicating resources that otherwise, that are in the general fund, going to one of, one of our highest priorities, which is housing and homelessness services. So thank you very much for helping us to prompt the best proposals coming forward, and then to evaluate them and take the difficult decisions to make the money stretches as far as, as far as it can. So thank you very much.
Counselor Duquesne.
Thank you. I do have to echo, no pun intended, echo, what my colleagues have said. And I am looking forward to fulfilling the needs of our community, and that's something that this grant is doing. So for all of your hard work, thank you, Ms. Palmer. I'm going to cheer you on across the finish line, and I just look forward to all the opportunity that's in front of us. I wholeheartedly support this.
Counselor Bloom.
Thank you. Yeah, I equally so, and the, the work that the committee has done to, to put this together. I would say that, you know, I think in the future, something that we should be looking at is that there are some organizations that have a little bit more reach with the state and other sources, and that maybe we should have a conversation about using this fund to uplift smaller local organizations that are, are coming up right now to address the housing needs that we have in Ashland. So I look forward, as I mentioned earlier to Ms. Palmer, look forward to seeing the, the Ashland Community Land Trust and Sunstone coming back for more funding next year.
I just wanted to add that last Tuesday, I had the privilege to be at the Planning Commission meeting when Habitat came forward and also presented. And to see the project that was proposed, the community stakeholders coming together on a project that is 40 to 80% AMI, and to have Habitat back in our community working these projects, both at Beach Creek, and then this one will follow on. And to see that, that's not the only one, to see these other groups coming forward and answering the call. It's, it's an exciting time. It's exciting work. And I think back to 2018, and this was the goal. And here we are with the funds available to meet the plans, and I really want to thank those who took the time to go through the proposals and to weigh the asks. It is not easy when they all are answering that call. So I'll be happy to support this motion. So with that, Alyssa, go, we have roll call.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. Thank you both. I think you get to hang out with us a little longer, right? We just need to get Tanya.
Yeah, we just have one more.
All right, give us one second to get the mayor back.
Thank you, Council Chair Hyatt. We move on now to the social service grant awards.
Yes, and I, I promise this is the final one for this year. So the city does offer, or has traditionally offered, social service grant funding every other year. And last year, or I guess, what, two years ago, it was changed from an allocation that happens twice to a one-year allocation. So the funding was allocated in the, for this biennium. And it was kind of similar to the prior year. So it was a total of $134,000 that was offered. And it was offered to be essentially, it could be split over the biennium, so $67,000 a year, or a total of 134. So we offered $134,000 and we received 12 applications totaling over $300,000 in response to these, to this funding availability. So on February 22nd, 2024, the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee once again reviewed the applications and heard the presentations from the applicants and then made a funding recommendation. And this is probably the most difficult funding recommendation process that the commission goes through, committee goes through every other year. Because all of the organizations that apply are doing such amazing work in the community. And it's so heartening to hear the work that they do and to hear the people that they serve and the benefits that they're providing to the community. So it is very difficult to, to try to parse this funding out. So if you want, we could read you what the recommendations are, although they are in your packet. What would you prefer?
I say something about sort of the nature of the list. You know, Dylan said something about wanting to support smaller organizations. That's what the social service grants do. And that they are so critical in building capacity in the safety net that we have here locally. So we were really happy to be able to have social service grants this year. And you'll notice that there's a range of types of service, types of population that each of these organizations serve. You know, a number of them deal with food, they deal with aging, they deal with sexual assault. So, you know, the name of our committee is Housing and Human Services. And so what the social service grants show is that broader mission of the advisory committee. The presentations from all of the folks who showed up that day for CDBG and the Housing Trust Fund and for this, Gina will probably remember from being our liaison for a long time. Those presentations from all of those different groups, and they all sat in the same room and listened to each other. It's a community building event. It's not just about people asking for, you know, for funding, but they're listening to each other and strengthening the connections between their organizations in the process of making their presentations. So it's always moving and inspiring to listen to their presentations. So I wish we had even more money. People might need to smoke more weed and then we might have more money. Should I say that? At any rate, so you'll see, so when you look at this list, you'll notice it's real diversity in the types of organizations.
Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, so I was just pondering, you know, just reviewing the list and realized that I'm on the board for RV COG. Now I'm there to represent Ashland, but I'm, I mean, I'm happy to step out if, if you'd like.
The, the rule is if you may have, you might have an interest, but if that interest is, is something in which you can observe and then at the same time make a decision that's independent of that interest and it's in the, and you believe it's in the best interest of the city, then there's not a problem. If you think that your interests might sway your feelings about whether or not you should or shouldn't do something, and it would affect the interests of the city.
I, I have an undying loyalty to the City of Ashland, so I'm not, it's not going to affect that.
Well, in that, in that case, then I guess you've, you've stated it. And if anyone has a problem with it, then they would bring it up, but otherwise it's up to you.
Councilor Duquesne?
I'm just ready to make a motion.
We're still in the question space. Councilor Hyatt?
Thank you, and thank you both for this work. Having sat in similar chairs on other grant programs similar to this one, you're always walking a line between two strategies. It's do you take the pot and distribute amongst all to the best of your ability? Or do you consolidate the funds and fully meet the requests? So my question, which I'm pretty certain you're anticipating, is do you feel that this award structure allows these organizations to meet the mission with which they came forward and requested funding? Or do you feel that there may be cases where it's not enough to fully get the job done?
I, I think these are meaningful amounts of money to small programs. Or meaningful amounts to programs that have additional sources of funding, like RV COG and Food and Friends specifically. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with these figures, actually. You know, our overall, as I mentioned, our overall principle behind these allocations, recommendations, is building capacity in the city. And that means sometimes, you know, assisting the larger organizations. But I think we, we probably really focus on trying to nurture smaller emergent groups, just as with, with housing, with Sunstone and the Land Trust, is building capacity in all of the things that we're supposed to serve.
And there really is a need in the community for smaller grants with less restrictive requirements that allow small organizations like this to have the administrative capacity to go after these grants and then administer them in a very simple way. That's not something that's found everywhere. So this is really a beneficial fund for the community organizations doing this sort of work and especially those sort of smaller community organizations.
It was, they're, they're all exceptional outlines, but one that really did stick out to me was the mental health and substance services that La Clinica will be bringing online. Is that, that sounds brand new, yes? And it's something that we've definitely been in need of and asking for. So thank you for the hard work.
Additional questions?
I have a, I have one. One of the conversations that I think is, is happening a lot in the nonprofit world right now is what is the, what is the outlay in terms of time and energy to ask for what size of a, of a gift? And one of the things I think we need to be very careful of is understanding that these are small grants. They're, we're asking for a lot of information. And, and about, I think it's probably about seven or eight years ago, I saw an assessment in the nonprofit literature that said, for the typical grant and the amount of information they require, it's not worth it to ask for anything less than $10,000. And that was years ago. And I think one of the difficulties that nonprofits struggle with is that everyone wants to see a 10 or 15% overhead rate. But then they ask them a million questions to get a small amount of money. And then they have to do that multiple times to cobble enough money together to get their funding. And then if they're accounting like they should be accounting, they have an overly large administrative burden. And so one of the things that, that I would love to see us do, and, and, and this is great work. The people are here doing great work, we're doing great work. I'm wondering, at some point before we do this again, can we take a look at streamlining this process so that, so that we recognize that we're giving out small grants? And, and the, the information requested is, is, is as tight to that requirement as possible? Recognizing that, you know, we, we have to have accountability. We need to make sure that we're giving it to, to folks who will do good things with it. But that's one of the things that, that struck me when I see this large list of small grants. How can we make it as seamless for them so that they spend less of their time raising money and more of their time doing that? So how, how, to my question, how difficult of a process is it to go back through and streamline a grant proposal process?
You know, I, I think it could be relatively simple. I will say, you know, the, traditionally, the Social Service Grant Fund is a coordinated application between the City of Ashland, the City of Medford, and United Way. So it was actually run by the United Way for many years and had a, a much more stringent application. When the city, when we dissolved doing that coordinated application process and both cities took back their own applications and United Way moved forward with their own application, we actually did streamline our process because we just didn't need that much information. Most of our grantees were much smaller. And without sort of three pots of money, it was a lot less money. And so we have streamlined it a lot. We do not take as much financial information. We recognize that some organizations aren't big enough to do the sorts of audits that other organizations might have. And for this application process, I am generally in communications pretty regularly with the people who are applying. So if they have recommendations for me during that process about some of the questions or if things don't align or it doesn't make sense, then I can go in right away and, and make those corrections to those grant applications and be responsive to that. All of that being said, generally, we have, you know, between 10 and 20 applicants. And I could certainly do an email list to them or we could have a, a, you know, a meeting where we invite them to say, you know, what, what would, what would make this process easier for you? We did bring up that we feel, you know, that we would like to be able to provide more money to them. And I think that, I'm always amazed at the feedback that they give us in those meetings, that they're really thankful for this and that this really does help and that our process is, is pretty painless, I think, for the most part. Not entirely painless, because, you know, it can't be that easy. But yeah, that our, our requirements aren't generally all that stringent. Yeah, we're pretty easy to work with. We try.
Councilor Bloom?
Yeah, I just have a point of information. When, when, when the motion is made here, because it's quite, quite a long list, it's, it's possible to not have to list off each of these organizations in the total for whoever makes that motion.
I, I think you, if you're going to give, then you're going to probably have to name off the list. I mean, that's the way it's set up, isn't it? I didn't, I didn't look here.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to word it just to, as recommended by the committee? If, if that's the way that somebody's going to go with it?
Well, if there's a, if there's a, an actual, oh, I'm looking.
Did they say that they accept the rec, the recommendations of the Housing and Human Services Commission as presented in the?
As presented in the council communication? Yeah.
If it's going to take a lot of look up, it's okay. I was trying to make it quicker.
If, are there any, any final questions?
It would be nice if they had a one single list, but you don't, but.
There is.
There is, there's a listed here.
I think you can just make the move to accept the, the recommendation of the committee.
Then that would be fine.
Okay, great. The floor is open for a motion. Councilor Duquesne?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to accept the Housing and Human Services Advisory Committee Awards Recommendation Allotting the Social Service Grant Funds as follows. Ashland Emergency Food Bank, $4,333. Angel, I mean, I'm sorry, Ashland Food Angels, $10,667. Community Works Inc., Dunhouse, $8,000. RV COG Food and Friends, $6,333. Jackson County SART, $6,667. La Clinica, $13,333. Aura, $34,333. Peace House, $1200, $12,500. Southern Oregon Jobs with Justice, $11,667. Sunstone Housing Collaborative, $7,500. St. Vincent de Paul, $13,333. United Way, $5,333.
Councilor Duquesne, would you like to care, would you care to speak to your motion?
Well done. Thank you.
Councilor Kaplan?
Yeah, similarly with the other award amounts, thank you very much to the Housing and Human Services Committee and the staff for bringing this forward to us.
Any further comments?
I just would also add my thanks both to our staff and our committee as well as to the folks who are doing this good work in the community. This, it feels good to be, to be able to help. And it also, wouldn't we love to be able to help even more? Roll call, please, Alyssa.
Kaplan?
Yes.
Dale?
Yes.
Bloom?
Yes.
Hyatt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Duquesne?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we move on now to the final agenda item of the evening. The Resolution 2024-12 Approving a Jackson County Order to Initiate Formation of a Jackson County Animal Control Service District and Consent to the Inclusion of City Territory Within the Boundaries of the District. I understand we have some of our neighboring folks from Jackson County? If you need to, you can bring an additional seat up, chair up to that space.
Okay, thank you, Dave Dotterver, County Commissioner, but also I live at 538 Sutton Place in, here in Ashland. Tonight, we come before you to ask you to, for your support to allow the citizens and the City of Ashland to participate in the new Jackson County Animal Control Service District. Our ask is for you to pass a resolution so the city would be included in the territory of the district if the voters of the county approve this in November, but only if it's approved by the voters in November. Stacy will be covering the need for, the need for and the general concept for the district. And, but I would ask you to please hold your questions until the end so we can get through the participation, through the presentation. We've been planning and working on this concept for several years, actually. And we needed, however, to complete an analysis and research to have a fully formed plan before we came before you with this plan. What we're seeking is long-term, stable funding for a robust animal control program, which serves the, for the safety and the well-being of the citizens of Jackson County. And I need to emphasize that we run an animal control program. We are not the Humane Society. And yes, we do have an animal shelter. But the number one responsibility of Jackson County with an animal control program is the safety and well-being of the citizens. And so we have things like when the sheriff goes out for a, to an illegal marijuana grow and it's been abandoned, we will find dogs out there, six and seven dogs out there occasionally that have been abused and are in need of a lot of medical care. And we bring them in because that's what we do. That's what our responsibility is. And again, an animal shelter is part of that. But we also know that we need to meet the humanitarian needs of a rapidly expanding animal population here, both cats and dogs and everything. We've been using one-time funding over the last few years to meet this need, but it's very clear that the long-term budget trends, that without this, for this, without the stable funding, we will have to greatly reduce our animal, our animal control program and the services we provided. So with that, I'll turn it over to Stacy.
We're having technical difficulty, so just one minute. Do you all have copies or we can hand you copies? If you want them.
Folks want copies? Yes, yeah, go ahead. If you can hand them to Alyssa, that would be great. She'll help us get them.
All right, we're ready to go. All right, thank you all for having us tonight. So my name is Stacy Brubaker. I'm the Department Director for Jackson County Health and Human Services. And the animal shelter and the control program falls under my jurisdiction. And so I'll just go through this PowerPoint. So we're the only publicly operated animal shelter in Jackson County, where it's operated by Jackson County Animal Shelter for Dogs as a function of Jackson County. Animal Shelter for Dogs is a function of Jackson County pursuant to Chapter 609 of the Oregon Revised Statutes. At times, as Commissioner Dottier indicated, we do impound dogs and we do take them into custody. And impounding a dog requires an animal shelter which meets the needs of the community and the animals in the care of the county at the animal shelter. Currently, and there is no provision in the statute that requires us to provide services to cats. We have historically done that, but that is an area that we are not obligated to do if we do not have resource to do that. How many of you have been to the animal shelter? Great, happy to give a tour of anyone who would like one. So you can see this is a picture of the front of that building. The building was actually, we believe, first built around 1961, but prior to 1975, for sure. The original capacity was for 14 dogs. They expanded to an additional 16 dogs and office space in 1975. In 1991, current space was expanded once again, adding capacity for 25 additional dogs, which would brought the total up to 55 kennels. Today, our current kennel capacity at the shelter is 86, with dogs having to be housed in crates along hallways if we are over census, which is more common than not. So this is a picture of the inside of the shelter. You can see that there are no indoor-outdoor shelters, kennels. These are all indoor kennels, which is not best practice. And it does cause some struggles of being able to maintain and keep the kennels clean as well as be able to manage any kind of risk or injury to staff as they manage those animals. So this is a picture of what we look like when we're over capacity. Those are crates that are up and down the hallways of the shelter in order to be able to provide services and care for those animals. This next slide is really basically showing our census in quarters from January 2018 to March of 2024. You can see that the top line is actually the total amount of animals that we have had in the shelter, that blue line. And you can see that that continues to bump up and above, for the most part, above 100 stat, clients, sorry, clients, animals at one time. And then that purple line actually is the one that shows the actual kennel dog, dogs that we have taken and we're responsible for. And you can see over time that we have continued to grow in our standard level of capacity at the shelter that we're trying to manage to and deal with those high amount of animals. This is our average length of stay, again, through 2018 through 2013. The blue line is the average length of stay for cats and the orange line is for dogs. Our goal is not to keep animals any longer than we have to. It's not good for them. Being in the shelter adds risk for behavioral issues as well as potential risk for disease and disease management. So we want to be able to move animals in and out as quickly as possible. As the Commissioner mentioned, there are times that we do take animals into custody and they're held as evidence for criminal cases. And when that happens, those dogs can stay in the shelter, the cats as well, for a very long time. As you may know, there's a shortage in public defenders across the state. And so the minute we have somebody ask for a public defender in their case related to animal abuse or neglect, then that really prolongs the process because it takes a while to get a public defender assigned to these folks. So we have these animals that linger in jail because they are really evidence dogs and we continue to take care of them with very limited opportunity to try to recoup any of that cost. This has come up a lot about the question of why now? Why now is really because our current animal shelter does not meet our needs for the community of Jackson County and for the requirements we have for care and custody of those dogs as well as other animals and so far, including cats. The current shelter has reached its capacity as far as our ability to renovate it, to dress it up, gussy it up, remodel, expand. I like to refer to it as you can't put, keep putting lipstick on a pig. We really have done everything we can to be able to accommodate the needs of this current structure. And then we've spent the last two years really doing a deep dive, looking at not just the costs, but also what we need to be able to come here and present before you and many of the, and the rest of the municipalities across the county around a feasibility study to be able to show what we need to be able to build and sustain a new animal shelter. So we also hear again that this is new. It's all of a sudden. It just came out of nowhere. Again, we've been talking and working on this for a couple of years. It's been the point of conversation in many Commissioner meetings on Wednesday as well as in work-study sessions of theirs. And our original first draft of the plans were actually drawn in August of 2021. And we continue to move forward and look at what best practices and what those designs would look like. So if you were to Google feasibility study and Jackson County Animal Shelter, you'd probably find about 10 articles just in the last year around conversations that we have had around this new ask for the animal shelter. So our current cost is the revenue currently received from performing dog control functions in the county is insufficient to properly construct, maintain, and operate the Animal Control Services District. To, the revenue currently generated is $636,255 per year as of fiscal year 2022-23, and that's through various fees. As you may know or maybe have heard, we have waived adoption fees on many occasions because it's, we need to be able to move those animals out. And that is one mechanism we have the ability to do, is to waive those fees and get the animals adopted. So our expenses are around $2.194 million per year as of fiscal year 2022-23. From 2014 to, up till 2014, 2015 and prior, the shelter really was primarily operated off of the bequest that was received by the BB funds. Those are gone. And so you can see that from 2014, 2015, that we were giving zero general fund dollars towards the cost of the shelter to now we're doing 1.2 million of general funds to be able to sustain and operate this shelter. Additional revenue is received from other sources, including some temporary supplemental, like bequests that are one-time investments, not anything that you can bank on for operational costs. And again, a general fund and then doing some non-operating reservices of trying to be able to recoup some of those dollars. And then these existing sources of revenue are simply just not sufficient to be able to continue to sustain over time. And that is one of the reasons we're here today is to talk about that. So some of the things that have changed, that have made our costs go up, is there was a law that was, that changed our ability to use some of the individuals who are housed at the Transition Center through Community Justice at the county. We used to have them cleaning our kennels and doing the kennel cleaning daily, kind of through a work crew type placement. However, those individuals are not considered incarcerated. They are there on their own free will. They can come and go as they please. And the new law actually made it so that we could not use them basically as indentured servants to earn their keep by cleaning the kennels. So Community Justice gave us notification around that and said that they would no longer be allowing us to have that program there. So we had to scramble to create some new positions within the county to be able to hire and train and retain those additional staff. And again, those are staff that are, that we haven't had to have before, but some of these changes have forced those, our hands to do that. And then the other thing is really consistently being over capacity. It really limits our ability to be able to continue to accept and care for cats. We have had to limit our number of intakes to just evidence cats at this point because of the number of animals we've had in the shelter. And again, because of space and resource and our obligation to serve dogs, that's really where we have focused those resources. We are down enough now on our census that we could potentially look at adding and accepting cats again. But again, that is not our obligation, but we do believe it's the best thing for the community and for the cats. So the reason we're here today is really on behalf of the Jackson Board of Commissioners really asking that the 11 cities and municipalities support the creation of a Jackson County Animal Service District under the authority of the Oregon Revised Statute 451.011Q by passing resolutions approving the inclusion of the city in the district. So the new district would have the authority to construct, maintain, and operate an animal care and control services facility, specifically a new animal shelter for the housing and care of dogs and other animals, including cats. All we're asking really is for this body to approve, putting it on the ballot for voters to vote and for them to be able to determine and the establishment of a permanent property tax at the rate of 15 cents per 1,000 of assessed value for the district. The district would then have the authority to levy and collect general property taxes up to the approved rate limit. We asked County Assessor's Office to give us a snapshot in time about what that might look like based on the median real market value and the assessed value. You can see Ashland is right there at the top. So average would be about $47.08 a year based on those numbers. So again, we really are asking for the will of Jackson County citizens to be able to be heard in whether to fund an Animal Control Service District to pay for the new facility and the cost of the ongoing services. And ultimately, that is what will determine the scope of what we do and what we develop in this project. So if the district is passed, then the construction of the new facility, which we right now have at $15 million approximately, with an anticipated additional $3.5 million in revenue and combined with continued general fund support from the county to continue to add to the debt service operations and maintenance of the shelter. That question has come up a lot, and it's not that the county will then stop providing general fund dollars. We have every intention of continuing to contribute those to be able to fill whatever gap that might be. Should the effort pass, then the county would build a big enough shelter to be able to actually house dogs and cats. So if the district were to fail, the consideration would be given to construct a reduced facility footprint with reduced operational and program offerings to the, to the extent possible with no guarantee that it can actually proceed. The shelter would be designed for dogs only, and then the county would relook at current fee structures and make recommended changes to fees for municipalities that are currently offered without cost. So really, the vision of this whole thing is the projected capital cost is 15 million with the total budget year four for, that we would have it built, open, and then operationalized, including the debt service and operations is approximately $6,347,849 with the ongoing operations of being $4,082. Important to include that much of those dollars are for veterinarians onsite services for spay and neutering. And then $600,000 of that is really for the cost of our enforcement program. So those are three officers and their vehicles and all those things that come along with that job. And then the debt service would be $2,265,108, and that would be eliminated after year 10 with the general fund continuing to fill the gap. And we cannot continue to do that at the current level that we're doing it. So the tax collected year four is approximately $4,087,578. So the things I'm about to show you are all projections. These are all estimates, best guesses, conversations we've had. Again, these are things we had to have in place to be able to put together the feasibility study and move forward with this ask. So we've had a lot of questions about the capacity of the new shelter. Those numbers have not been landed on. However, it's important to note that our, our goal isn't necessarily around increasing by a great deal of capacity. Our goal really is to improve efficiencies, the quality of the care that the animals get, and be able to move them through our system quicker by having a medical onsite where we can actually do spay and neuters with an onsite vet rather than needing to wait for appointment times for vets when they have time. And then finding opportunities to increase the adoption rate to move animals through the shelter faster and onto what, their new homes. So once we, once we have the go-ahead for a new shelter, that is when we would start an official process of hiring an architect, creating a design team to work on that. We would get input from the professionals that know best practices and best ways to project what we would need in the years to come. And then also community partner participation and really be able to come up with what the true numbers of kennels are that we would need based on the information that we have and are provided by the experts at that time. So the new location of the shelter would be on the corner, the southwest corner of Grooman Drive and Kingsley Drive in Medford. This is a visual of the parcel of land. The pink is how big the land is and the, the green part is how much of that land that we own, the animal shelter would actually take up, given its current design. This is a closer shot of that. And you can see that there is space for expansion or for us to be able to continue to figure out what is the best thing for the shelter moving forward. And then this final, this slide is really our preliminary draft of what a shelter would look like. To the left, those are the dog kennels, and then to the far right would be the cat kennels and the cat area. The middle section really is our medical area and staff area. We'd also would have community space where we would hope to be able to get a little bit more upstream and actually offer some classes and education to be able to, A, prevent animals having to come to the shelter in the first place, but also be able to really allow people to meet a dog before they take it home, which ultimately sometimes ends in a failed adoption. So wanting to really be able to try to offer those supports and things upfront rather than waiting until somebody brings their dog back to the shelter. And that was a lot. Any questions? They always call on me for prayer at dinner because I can talk fast and they can eat quick. So I know that that was a lot in a short time.
Thank you for your presentation. So Counsel, we have a couple of people who would like to speak. So what I'd like to do is ask questions first of our presenters, and then we'll bring up the folks who have come to speak to us on this issue, and then we'll bring our presenters back up again. So initial questions from Counsel. Counsel Blue?
Thank you, Mayor. So my understanding is correct that really what you're looking for is, is capital funding, that you'll be covering the operational side of things?
Thank you, Counsel Blue. My name is Joel Benton. I'm the Senior Deputy County Minister. And the other hat I wear is that I'm the county attorney, I'm county counsel, so I'm sort of asking, answering those questions. We're looking for both. So if you looked back at the slide, the revenue projected is about $4 million a year. The capital, while we're paying off the, the bond, is about $6 million a year, so there'll have to be about a $2 million general fund contribution. I think similar to what the county is facing, the city is probably recognizing our costs go up about 7%, 7.5% a year. Our general fund revenue from property tax goes up about 3.5% a year. So the projections really show that as this, the years go by and the district progresses, by the time that the capital fund, the capital expenditure comes off of the books, we'll likely need that, what used to be paid for, for capital to cover that increased cost of operating that we've seen. It might not be dollar-for-dollar in year 11, but eventually it grows such that that additional rate is needed to cover that increased cost of operation. So the plan, you know, and it's, it's like the city, you know, the county adopts a budget every year, the city adopts, I think you're a biannual budget. You know, it's ultimately up to the, to the board at the time or the city council at the time, but that's, that's the projection and what the feasibility study for the district is showing is that we do have to keep running the, the general fund contribution to pay for those services.
So is there a deadline on this potential tax?
Well, so this is to create a new service district. So it's different than a levy. So we're actually proposing to create a new, a service district, which creates a new taxing entity. So it's, it's a permanent rate limit which should be in place.
So I'm, I'm just curious because, you know, I think people pay their taxes and expect those taxes to go to services. So asking for a new tax for a service that people are already expecting to receive might be a bit confusing for a lot of taxpayers. And I'm also curious if you could speak to the contingency in the Health and Human Services Department as well as the robust contingency that the county holds and why there was no conversation about using any of that for this?
So I'll answer your first question first. So I guess the, the question is, is people are receiving the service, however, as Stacy said, we're providing a level of service because we've had the revenue and resource to do so that's more than the county's obligated to do so. We have heard feedback from the community that they like that level of service, but we're running out of that general fund ability to continue providing that level of service, which is why we're seeking additional revenue through the service district. If the, the service district fails, there, you know, this is Plan A. This is permanent, ongoing funding to provide the service that the community wants. That's why we're looking for a service district. There are all their alternatives that aren't as permanent, you know, You know, we could look at tax levies. We could look at five-year levies or 10-year levies for capital. But those, every year, every five years, you're going to have to go back to the voters and ask. And if you end up having the voters say no at a particular five-year period, you're going to then have to downsize what you were doing, you know, your service levels, because you've lost that revenue to provide that service. So this is why we came up with Option A. It sort of bridges that gap that we're no longer have that general fund revenue that we've had to provide those services because our costs keep going up. And so that's why we're looking for additional funding to keep those service levels.
Counselor Hyatt, and then we'll come back.
Do you want me to answer his other question?
Sure, yes.
Forgot about it myself.
We'll keep going around, counsel.
Your other question was sort of about our contingency. And so, you know, the contingency isn't really a... So the contingency is, and you all know what a contingency is. So I think you're talking about that reserve that we've identified. And I think it's important to note, so I think that it was originally identified, the number's been thrown around. And I'm a lawyer, I'm not a number guy. So please take into account, most of these are estimates, about $205 or so million. The issue is, is only about half of that $205 million is non-dedicated reserves. So half of that money, about $100 million, is dedicated for the airport purposes. You know, the airport's been talking about an expansion. So that money generated on the airport can only be used for the airport. Some of that reserves comes from contracts or funding we have through state or federal, provide Health and Human Services services. So we can't use that money to provide for this service, which leaves us about $100 million. Sounds like a lot of money. So about $100 million of that is, $10 million of that $100 million is our actual contingency, so that we're there if we need to access our contingency for things that come up that we didn't expect during a budget year. Additionally, we use about $15 million, I believe, of that as sort of the float that we need from July until we collect taxes in November so that we don't have to go out and borrow that tax revenue. So that takes the $100 million down to about $75 million. We understand that, you know, the community has talked... I mean, I've been here for 13 years. He's probably talked about that long, about the need for new jail. The county came and talked to the cities and proposed a new jail district about six years ago. The voters failed it, or the voters declined to form it. You know, the need for the jail has continued to be talked about. So the county is looking at proposing a new jail district. The rate that's being looked at isn't going to be enough to build and operate the new jail. So the county has kind of earmarked about $40 million of that $75 million to help, out of the general fund, to help build that jail, which brings it down to about $35 million. A lot of people don't understand this, but when it comes to the Circuit Court, so the judges that sit at 100 South Oakdale, the county has to provide the buildings and the state provides the people. So that building is, I think, probably 40 or 50 years old. Basically, it's out of space for new judges, and we just got a new judge that's going to come online on July 1st. Our facility maintenance person, Ryan, is here. He can talk about, like, there's no more remodeling. So we're really going to have to look at actually building a building to house a new judge. And we're still at the top of the list for new judges. So we've gotten, I think, two new judges in the past couple of years. According to the state statistics, we're due for five more. So we need to find a place to house these judges to get our caseloads down so that we can deal with those things. So the money's there, but it's got a lot of stuff that needs...
I'm going to help you here. We started talking about one tax, and now we're talking about two.
Well, we're not really talking... Yes, we're not here to talk about that tax today. We're here to talk about this tax. And ultimately, we're going to have to come back when it comes to the jail district to talk to all of the cities and to talk to the voters about if they're interested in doing that. But it is, it's kind of like what that money has been earmarked isn't the right word, because the county, at least, we don't adopt, we don't appropriate money for a project until we're ready to do the project. Because if you don't do a project in a budget year, then you don't really need to appropriate. So the money isn't, you know, appropriate in our budget. You can't find in the budget, okay, here's $40 million for the jail. Medford asked this very question, that's why, I know. But it's kind of like what the board has directed. So that's where that gets down. And so when you take all those numbers away, it really is about if we do all of those projects, that's an if, I acknowledge, it leaves really only about a $20 million non-dedicated reserve, which isn't a lot of money.
Counselor Hyatt.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. My four-legged furry family member was adopted through the shelter about five years ago. So I do truly appreciate the efforts that go on there on all fronts. As this plan was in development, I guess my question is, is there a schedule of public engagement where municipalities or community meetings or focus groups were held with the various municipalities or local interest groups that gave input into the solution chosen? And the reason I'm asking this is because I know Josephine County right now currently has a levy coming up, similar situation. So they are also facing this challenge. And I'm also curious why a service district, not a special district, was operated for, was opted for, especially given the county's engagement when it comes to our four-legged friends, both cats and dogs. And I know sometimes there's confusion on what is a service district? What is a special district? Service district keeps the control with the county. Special district would have its own board. And a few times, the word, what the county is obligated to do. So that also informs my question if service versus special was considered, maybe to remove the obligation from the county entirely and let the special district consideration be taken up by the community for its own board? Are these options that were considered? Was there community engagement?
So I guess our community engagement with the city councils as we're here tonight, if you've been on the city council, we've not been here before discussing this. But we have been discussing it internally. There's been some news articles about it. But this, for us, is the beginning of the process to begin that community engagement, to find out what is available and what is the community support. So for us, this is the beginning, not the end of the community process in engaging with the community to see if the community is interested in passing this as a service district. As for special districts versus service districts, like, there's, one of the issues is that there are county obligations that we can't basically punt to a special district, right? So we are the dog control authority. If a special district was formed to run an animal shelter, the county can't get rid of that obligation when it comes. That's different than the libraries. So libraries were formed probably eight years ago, 10 years ago. So the libraries were a function run by the county but weren't a mandated function by the county. And so when the special district was formed, they could take over providing that function, similar to the fire districts and all the other special districts. You know, there's the irrigation districts and all these special districts that are taking on functions that aren't mandated by a different government. In this particular case, we do have a unique situation where some of the things that the shelter does are functions that the county is mandated to do that we can't, if a special district is formed, just turf off to the special district. So that's why we're looking at that service district to keep it in what the county is considering and the county's control, because that's an obligation that we have regardless of a special district is formed in addition to the county having the function.
What percent of the animals that come in are related to criminal or evidence proceedings?
We actually have some statistics.
Great.
Well, so, and I think, so I think it's interesting because those evidence animals aren't necessarily a quote-unquote county function. So the county obligation is that dog control function. So it's that function for dangerous dogs or dogs at large or dogs that attack livestock. So that's really what the county function is, is the dog control district. But as Stacy was saying, when we have those dogs that are dangerous to humans, dangerous to livestock or are at large, we have an obligation as the dog control authority to bring those dogs in and then maintain them and do something with them. And if their owners are the reasons why they're dangerous, then we have to take actions against their owners. And so that's where the county function comes in. The evidence dogs are something that we also do because we have a shelter, we're the only public-operated shelter. And I think our current rate is about $30 a day to board an animal, which owning an animal is cheaper than anywhere I've ever heard of trying to board my cat when I go out of town. And so that's one of the things that we do. But that, actually, those evidence animals, which is something we do, is one of those functions that could go away if we can't find the funding to provide that source. So that's not an obligation for us. So if a special district were to form, is to answer, go back to your question, that could be something that the special district were to offer the municipalities that would take something off of the county's, sort of, the county's plate. But no matter what, how much is taken off of the county's plate, there's still something, there's still things that we're obligated to do. One of those things is, one of those things that we need to do our function is we have to have a shelter because that's part of the things that we have to do when we take those dogs. And for an efficiency standpoint, it probably doesn't make sense to have two shelters, one run by a special district, one run by the county. So that's why we're looking at, okay, maybe we're the most effective or inefficient way to provide that range of services through our general fund contribution and that service district revenue.
So there's no way to MOU to another organization? So I mean, like, for instance, in a prior community that I lived in, it wasn't a county function. And I know incorporating documents are different no matter where you go. But law enforcement was still able to contract and bring the animals to a service provider?
Oh, absolutely. And if Ashland were to have some, were to have some evidence animals that need to take into place, they don't have to bring them to the county. The county just doesn't currently charge Ashland or Medford or...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't articulate it well.
Sorry.
Couldn't the county bring it to a third party?
So, and this is, this is where, I'm a lawyer, so I'm very conservative in making sure. So yes, in theory, we could contract with a special district. But when you contract with a special district or any third-party entity, and then they don't meet that burden, it's our problem, not theirs. Like, we can have a problem with them, but the person that we have an obligation, that public, is that dog control district. The public, we can't say, well, sorry, we got rid of that through an MOU with the special district. You have to go look at them. We're still the ones who are going to be on the hook. Now, we may have some potential recourse against the special district, and if that were to be the case, if they fail to meet the contractual requirements, but you can't contract away your legal obligations.
Counselor Kaplan, or, excuse me, Counselor Dale, and then Counselor Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I have a, I'm still a little confused. I have a question on, you had said that this is the beginning of the discussions, and, but I'm, I guess I would say I don't understand that because you had said that you had already covered all of the alternatives and then come up with this alternative, and now we're having the beginning of the discussions about that. So my question is, and some of the feedback that I've gotten from folks, volunteers and other folks in the community have said they have not been as involved in that. So can you speak to the discussions and where the public was involved relative to coming to the decision of this alternative? And then now we're having the beginning? Or, I'm confused on the order in which we got here.
And I would apologize if I miscommunicated. So, and I, so there hasn't been a lot of public involvement in coming up with this potential solution. This was the solution that the county internally was coming up with, which we felt was the best solution. When the public gets involved is, so we have to have a plan, right? Like, if we're going to come to the cities and say, this is what we, as the county, think is the best concept for providing these level of services. Where the public wants to come in, and it may be, there may be the discussion of the public of, we think a special district versus a service district, and there's that dialogue. But really, the county internally thinks the service district is the best means of ensuring permanent, ongoing funding for this service. And so the public comes in because once we have that, sort of, that level of funding guaranteed, we can then spend the money, like, you, you know, I know that you had a long conversation about the Briscoe School today. Like, it is expensive to draw plans. And so, like, for us, to bring in the public and, like, spend, you know, I think what an architect's making about 5% the cost of a building just to draw the building, which tells me I went into the wrong business. I mean, if we're looking at a $15 million structure, I mean, we're looking at like, half million is $750,000 just in architecture fees to come up with, like, the actual design and engineering of the building. So for us, it's, that's, once we have that revenue source guaranteed, that's when you bring the public in to start designing the building and programming of the building so that then the building itself and the program itself meets the needs of the public. We're just focused right now on, this is the way that we think we can fund all of that. So for us, internally, it was more of a funding discussion. Okay, this is a funding model based upon what we think the community needs and what we think the funding can provide. But when it comes down to, as Stacy was saying, like, what are the design of the kennels? What community spaces are going to be used for? That's where that public, from the county's perspective, public input begins.
Okay.
Counselor Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. I have a couple just financial questions. You've got a, I mean, appreciate the pro forma. And when I look at it, I see that you're basically looking at a 14.850 million dollar bond, paid out over 10 years. But the debt service on that seems awfully high. And I'm kind of wondering what sort of interest rate you're looking at to generate $2.4 million in the first year of debt service on a $14.8 million bond?
Okay, so I am not the county budget finance guy. My recollection is, and if it's not in the pro forma, I believe it was in the 5.5% to 6% range.
Doesn't say.
Okay, I apologize. I can get that information to you. If you don't mind me pulling out my phone, I can probably text the person and find out for you.
Yeah. And then I also noticed in the pro forma that the revenue, you've got, you mentioned general fund revenue currently at about $1.2 million. And we heard that it was going to continue, the county was going to continue to pay general fund. But I don't see that in the pro forma. I see no general fund contributions until year six.
Do you have the...
I apologize.
And then I see general fund revenue, general fund contributions from year six to year 10.
Oh.
And then nothing in year 11.
I see what you're saying. So the issue is, is so that if this district is passed in November of 2025, we won't be able to collect the revenue until November of 2026 because we're too late to levy it. Or 2024, sorry. If the, if the initiative, we won't be able to collect the revenue until 2025. So the pro forma is based upon the new building being built. So in years one through three, it takes about four years to build a building. So what we're showing is a pro forma from when the building is being built. So the county contribution isn't going towards the funding of the, of the building in this proposal. The county's general fund for those first three, three and a half years is going to running the current operational, of the current shelter and doing all that. This is a pro forma to show what it's going to look like if a new shelter is built, and then based upon the, the operational costs of that new shelter. So this is not incorporating the cost of running the existing shelter and the operations of that.
So I get that, and thank you, but that's not what the pro forma says. The pro forma shows the shelter opening, you know, in the third quarter of 2027--
Right.
--but no general fund revenues in year four, which is 28, 29, or 29, 30.
I think if you look--
Maybe I'm misreading the pro forma.
Okay, so if you look at year four, which would be the fourth, fourth operational, so 28, 29, on the back, there's like two pages of that pro forma.
Yeah.
So if you look at the net shelter cost in year four, it's $5.585 million. And then the revenue is showed at, the net collection from the, the service district is 4.087. So that's where we're seeing the cash flow, that negative 1.49, that's where that county general fund contribution comes in. And it also includes some of that sort of revenue collected during the first couple of years while we're building the building, expending the money to build the building. But that's where, the general fund contribution sort of is making up along with that additional, that difference. But that, that is what the plan is, and at least, I can, I can try to get you a cleaner pro forma that shows that a little bit better. It's really the difference, but I'm happy to, to try to get something to you that makes it a little clearer.
So you'll be accumulating money into the general fund from the levy, from the, from the, before you're actually using it for the new facility, and then that will be, you will be using that to backfill later on, is that what you're saying?
No, but both, it will both be using that money that we've been accumulating along with what the county is currently spending out of its general fund. So we're using the revenue from the service district because it's its own taxing entity, so it doesn't go into the county's general fund, it goes into the service district's fund. But I'm happy to reach out to our finance officer and get you something that shows it a little bit clearer.
And then why does it stop in year 11? Why is there nothing in year 11?
Oh, we, because the, the law says that we have to show, like, well, the law says that we have to show actually a one-year and a three-year, we were just trying to trend it out. That was our endpoint.
Thanks.
So, Counsel Duquesne.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I, too, had a question, something you mentioned, I believe, Stacy, you mentioned why now? And that was one of my questions, why now, and I appreciate your explanation, but this has been on the county CIP list for the past 18 years. And I'm thinking that in the past 18 years, in looking at the situation and the structure that this has been in for all this time, and now it comes in front of us, one of my questions is, I believe you had 11 different municipalities. Have you presented to all 11 of them as of now, or no?
You are our sixth?
Sixth, I think it's sixth.
Sixth. Another group of people from the county is up at Butte Falls right now, presenting to them. We have Rogue River Thursday morning, we have--
Shady Cove.
Shady Cove Thursday night, we have Central Point the following Monday and Thursday, and then there's another one who I keep forgetting. So you're, depending on if you count, you are Butte Falls as sixth or seventh, you're the sixth or seventh city that we've come to.
I think it's Eagle Point next week, too.
Eagle Point, thank you. Something that I, I wanted to touch base on what Counselor Hyatt brought up, the difference between service district and special district. And you said that, I believe you mentioned that you've already been in conversation, I'm sorry, actually, it was Counselor Dale, that you've been in conversation with the community already, but earlier you mentioned it was more internal? And then apparently the county put this together and is presenting it to the different municipalities. And if we are going to be transparent and really have a conversation about this, I believe was kind of backwards. I believe that the community should have been more included in this conversation before this is presented to go on the ballot. So can you tell me about the, the conversations that you had that were not, you know, inclusive of just the county?
So I don't know which one, which comment you're referring to, but we, for me, it has been, the last two years has been ongoing conversations with multiple, a variety of individuals and entities about our need for a new shelter, which is really what we have spent our last two years doing, is really doing a deep dive into what the costs are, what our obligations are, what the program actually needs. Again, I've only been in my position two years, so I can only speak to that. And so, really, just trying to sort through those pieces as we have come along, and then reporting that back to the Board of Commissioners, and ultimately, my task was to come up with the numbers for the feasibility study so that we could decide what the next steps were. So, again, like I said in, in this slide, it's really, we had to put this together for the feasibility study to be able to go ahead and ask for a district. In this case, the Board of Commissioners determined that they were going to do the animal district, service district. And then, it's, once we know what the next steps are, whether this passes, doesn't pass, whatever, then that's when we need to make the decisions about what does it actually look like, and what does it, you know, what pertains to best practice and what we want to build.
I have a quick question on that one.
Yes, and then, and as soon as this question is done, we're going to bring our speakers up.
Okay, so one, one quick question, thank you. So I think I heard earlier that the only obligation from the county is to have a shelter. Is that correct, whether it's a special district or a service district?
So our obligation is a dog-controlled district, so our obligation is to, is to be responsible for dogs at large, dogs which are dangerous to either humans or livestock. So as part of that, we have to have a place when those dogs are at large or dangerous to shelter them or keep them, to protect the public, and that's why we need a shelter. So there isn't really a, a line in the ORS that says the county has to have a shelter. It's because we have that dog-control function that requires us to impound dogs that we need a shelter.
And that's why I made the comment about, this is an, this is about an animal control district, and yes, we have to have a shelter, like he's talking about, but the principal responsibility of the county is the safety and well-being of the citizens, you know, and as part of that, we want to take care of the, the animals and things like that. But that's our primary responsibility as a county.
Thank you. What I need to do now, because we have a hard stop at 9:30, so what I'd like to do is to ask the county folks to just take seats very close to the front there, in those, in the audience seats, and then I would like to call our two speakers up. We have Jeannie Schuar and Denise Kraus, and you'll come to these microphones, you'll each have three minutes. Alyssa will give you a single chime when you have 20 seconds left, she'll give you a double chime when your time is done, and at that point, please complete your sentence. Please give your name and where you live, the city in which you live, prior to starting your testimony.
Denise Kraus, I live in rural Ashland. On February 29th, the Jackson County Administrator updated commissioners on long overdue capital projects. He stated that, quote, "Obviously, most of those have not been forward-facing, not out in the public," unquote, such as replacing the inadequate animal shelter. On March 26th, the county administrator unveiled a proposal for a perpetual service district, a new tax, and almost $15 million in debt. There has been absolutely no public involvement in the planning process. Only one of several alternatives was put on paper. Yet, just one week later, county started pushing this complicated proposal to city councils for buy-in, and they want you to vote tonight without getting any further input or looking at options. They're asking for a service district. A service district means new taxes to create even more bureaucracy still under county control. How is that different from a special district, like the library system or the Rogue Valley Transportation District? Well, special districts have their own elected boards and budgets, they're focused on one critical program, and are not under county control. Options to provide a new animal shelter need to be explored. One example could be to create a special district instead of a service district where community members who are invested and knowledgeable about the care of animals could serve on the board. That is just one of the options. There are several others to be considered, like possibly partnering with a third-party nonprofit. The county administrator has repeatedly stated that we can't afford to build a new animal shelter, that it's been on the capital projects list for 18 years, but the county cannot afford to operate it, after sidelining volunteers, shutting down the foster home program, and losing cheap trustee labor. But those problems can be fixed. Why not explore the option for county to proceed to build a bigger, safer, more efficient shelter while a community-oriented process sorts out the best long-term solution, long-term options for operations and funding? We deserve transparency. We need to examine all viable options with public input and forward-facing planning, involving experts and respecting stakeholders. As a shelter volunteer myself, I'm extremely concerned about our homeless animals. Rubber-stamping bureaucratic proposals diserves the public's interest. It is time for a collaborative and cost-effective approach, not defaulting to higher taxes, a perpetual service district, and more unresponsive big government. City councils can hold off until they can do more research and get public input. Don't get pushed into a bad decision. If you vote yes on the resolution tonight, and later it passes in the countywide vote, but Ashland residents vote against the service district, your residents will be bound by a perpetual service district and tax that they actually rejected. Caution is warranted. Jacksonville tabled this, Talent pushed it back with no further consideration. There may very well be a better way. There will be a public forum to discuss options for a new animal shelter at the Medford Library on April 23rd. I hope you all can attend. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Jeannie Schuar, and I've had the privilege of living in Ashland for 30 years. I'm coming today as a, as a taxpayer, and I feel that the county commission is, with only three commissioners, has had difficulties with appropriate oversight of county services, and the animal shelter is a clear example of that. And I feel that by pushing a service district onto the taxpayers, it's, it's almost, there's just not enough representation and oversight available, and I think they've totally skipped the opportunity for public input and, and working with stakeholder, stakeholders before presenting this plan. It's similar to what happened with the jail. If we don't get public input as a part of the process, voters are less likely to support it anyway. So I urge you to table this at this time, and urge the county to go back and get buy-in and participation from all stakeholders in this, in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. So if the county folks can come back up, do we have any remaining questions? Counsel Hyatt.
In understanding the county's obligation to provide animal control and the examples provided this evening of the, the challenging behaviors of some of the animals that the county has to navigate, and also the overcrowding element, I know in this community there is not an appetite for a facility that does have to, as part of its procedure, euthanize. And I, I am curious what the current model looks like when you hit capacity? What happens with the census? How many end up adopted out? How many end up shipped to other sheltering entities in the state? And how many have to be euthanized? And I think sometimes it's, that's a very abstract question, it's hard to ask, so maybe, let's just take the most recent example, say since April 1st. What have we been looking at with regard to the challenge that the current shelter is facing with navigating its population?
So, again, I've been in charge for two years. This last, two weeks ago was really the first time we met that capacity of 122 animals that we just could not continue to take more animals in. So that was really when we did the call-out to the community to say, "Hey, who can help us? What can we do?" And we moved forward with that, and were able to transfer, adopt, and unfortunately, there are times where we, as the county program, have to make a decision around euthanasia, whether that doesn't feel good, people don't like doing that, our staff don't like doing that, but we do have criteria. It's overseen by our onsite veterinarian. She weighs in on what that looks like. And in this instance, yes, space was a factor, as it would be in any overcrowding situation, but that was not the only factor that went into the 12 that we ended up needing to euthanize. It was behaviors, it was medical issues, it was quality of life. So there are a lot of different factors that go in, and that's really between the veterinarian and our, our other medical team staff that make those decisions about that. And unfortunately, space is always a consideration, especially in a shelter operation like that, but we've never been in that situation of that many dogs at the same time. So it, it was an anomaly, hopefully that doesn't happen again, you know, but I want to say that it was wonderful how the community did pour out for helping us across the state as well as locally. But unfortunately, a, a dog-control program, we shoot for the 90% live release rate, we hover around 88, 89, for the most part, but there are times that we're not going to meet that level because, simply because of the program that we are, we don't have that luxury.
Thank you for the, the information.
So I have a question about the, the operational costs and the capacity, given this most recent conversation. The numbers that you showed earlier looked like it was about $2.2 million a year to run it in its current state, and that you were bringing in about $636,000, bringing, making a net of about $1.5 million for current operations of the facility. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And then, when I see the operations figure after the new shelter is built, that number jumps up to over $4 million for operations, and that yet you have said that you're not building additional capacity. So how do we understand the over two times more expensive facility that doesn't have additional capacity?
So I, I didn't say we weren't getting additional capacity, I said that that wasn't necessarily the only aim. There will be additional capacity, we have not landed on those numbers yet. It's really going to be about efficiency. And in addition to that, there will be some, depending on the size of this, of the facility, that we will potentially have to add additional staff. We also want to have more veterinary in time. So there are expenses in the new shelter that will add up to those additional costs compared to what we have now.
And, and your current budget is $610 million for this, this fiscal year, is that about correct?
No, the 600, that $600 amount is what I was saying, is what we have brought in for fees.
No, the $610 million is your annual budget that you, for the current fiscal year, is that correct?
That is the current annual fiscal budget. I believe the operational budget's in about the 250, 235 range.
Okay, so we are getting close to our time here. I understand, Counsel Kappel, you have an additional question?
I do, yes.
Okay, if you can do it quickly, and then we'll see, we'll open the floor for a motion.
It was prompted by one of the speakers making this comment that if Ashland voter, if we move this forward and Ashland voters were to say no, we would, Ashland voters would still be charged. What's the, what about the opposite? If we say no now, what is the charge to Ashland for using the service?
Well, so that is something that we haven't really looked at specifically because right now the county has been providing it without charging Ashland. So what I would say is that if, if the service district fails and we continue to provide the services that we do, the evidence animals, the taking in of other animals, we don't have to, we're going to have to look at additional fees. Our first goal is not to do additional fees. I do have an answer to, to one of your previous questions. The assumed rate on the bond is 3.8%. I can get you the breakdown of how that works.
Yeah, this doesn't look like it to me, but--
Okay.
Let me make sure, though, I don't make sure that, I'm not sure that was your question, though. Your question was, was if, if you tonight decide not to include the city of Ashland in the territory--
Yeah.
--and it passes county-wide, what happens?
So if, if it passes county-wide, well, then we would have to, what we'll do is we're going to all the cities, so it'll all come to the Board of Commissioners to determine with the cities who've agreed to participate, is the 15 cent going to generate enough to go forward with deciding to form the service district? We wanted to have every city participate, so as one of the speakers said, Talent has tabled it to a future without a future agenda item. So if Talent decides not to, we want to see what all 11 cities have to say. At that point, the Board of Commissioners will have to make the decision, do we have enough property tax to move forward forming the district?
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. So we're, we need to find out if there is an interest in putting a motion on the floor. If there is, and we have it on the floor by 9:30, we can have an additional 10 minutes to discuss. So the floor is open for a motion. You had a question, Counsel Duquesne? Oh, no, you don't have one. Okay. All right, for lack of a motion, we will move on from this agenda item and, and come, we have, we don't have time this evening to take up our very last one, which is discussion of our liaisons, but I do want to thank the county for coming this evening and for presenting this information. It's a, it's a big conversation, anytime that we have a permanent new tax, and, and we appreciate the information that you presented this evening.
And I want to say thank you so much for your time, I appreciate the conversation, and I really do, I appreciate you, your, all of your times and your questions, thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate that everyone is trying to figure out how to make services happen with limited budgets.
It is a problem we all have.
Mayor, is there any staff direction to bring this forward at a date certain in the future?
Is there interest in bringing this forward? Each counselor maybe just quickly speak to that, we, we only have a minute. Yes, no? In its current format?
In its current format? No.
Current format, no.
Same.
Same.
No.
Same, I'd like more information after this April 23 public meeting.
Okay.
That was very clear, thank you.
Okay, so we are at 9:30, we have a hard stop, so we are not able to take up the question of the, council liaisons tonight, but we will do that at our next meeting. Meeting is adjourned. Safe travels home, everyone.